Is Nate working today? I'm gonna call him and question him. Put the screws to him. For my own entertainment.
What happened?
Oh. Okay, so we're streaming. This would be a great thing to talk about later. Flying.
All right, well, you may bring it up in your report. So we're ready?
We're going.
Okay, it looks like we're ready to go. We appreciate everybody's attendance today at this Iron County Commission meeting. We are here Monday, the twenty-fifth day of September, two thousand twenty-three, and fall's in the air, and it's gonna be a beautiful day. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss the public's business, and we'll begin by having an opening prayer offered by Carson Reed, our assessor, and following his prayer, Bruce Anderson, our Public Works Director, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. John, what's the date on those minutes?
August twenty-eighth.
So we will go ahead and look at approving the minutes of August twenty-eighth. Does anybody have a chance to look at those? They were long.
They were long.
Thank you for whoever typed those up.
That's a genie.
Genie, thank you.
I'll move for approval of the minutes, eight twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And then we need a motion to pay the bills from September eleventh through September twenty-fourth.
I will move for approval of claims for payment from September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, to September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
It moved to second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to departmental reports. First, we'll go with our building and zoning planner and planning. Terry.
I'm gonna show you, so I can get recorded.
Ooh, oh my.
Could've been a lot worse.
Whose truck was it?
This was Nate's. Nate's.
Oh dear.
Well, he called me up, and he was teasing me.
He said he totaled it or what?
No, I got in a head-on. I says, are you okay? And he says, oh, I'm all hurt and stuff. Actually, we were going pretty slow. No, that's what he did. But he scared me.
On Cedar Highlands?
Yeah. I was sitting in class last Thursday afternoon, and he calls me and says, Terry, he says, I'll never believe it. And I says, what? He says, I got in a head-on.
Heart just drops.
You guys are killing me. I says, what happened? He says, I'm going to Cedar Highlands, and the side-by-sides coming down and slides over and hits me and on. And he's out laughing with whoever it was. And who was this? He says, Justin Ludlow. I says, the same Justin Ludlow that works for Cedar City Police Department? Yes, it is. So, just for record, that it was Justin Ludlow that hit him.
He was driving like he was in his patrol car.
I'm sorry, who was it? Just Justin Ludlow.
Spell that?
J U S T. So he's okay. Justin and his daughter were okay. They were coming off with a cut-up elk. So they'd been elk hunting, and it was coming down in the morning. So everybody's okay except the truck. So that was my big last week on that one. I'm out of town and get a phone call. So yeah, but everybody's okay there. We gotta...
Other than teasing me, Nate did a great job and took care of things the way he should've.
Yeah, he called me after. He said, I'll talk to John. I says, you're gonna have to go to work, but aren't you? Yeah. I says, it's an accident. You gotta go. So, but no, everybody's good there.
There's a process. You gotta go through it.
Yeah. All right. Now see what we handed to you. We'll start with that first page. This year, we have issued three hundred and eighty-two permits to date compared to four hundred and fifty-five last year. So our building permit numbers are down, but I think still a majority of that was from the first part of the year in winter time. I think we're starting to level off a little bit with the interest rates. So I think we're still on the down level. We've still, I was counting this morning, I've got about twenty permits to review that's been submitted in the last, a little more than a week. So we still have a lot of permits coming in. So we haven't died off totally. We're still busy with a lot of stuff going on, but our numbers are down. Dollars always go down with number of permits going down. So we've completed four hundred and three project reviews so far this year. That's on the building side. Building inspections for the year, we've done two thousand six hundred and thirty-two. So we're still chasing the county a lot with a lot of inspections going on with what we've got issued. Code enforcement, we have forty-four seven-day notices sent out so far this year. Fourteen thirty-day notices. That's given them thirty days to come into compliance. And then we're not sure how many Dave has taken to court, but we have had several that's gone to court that Joe has processed and turned over to the attorney's office. And Dave's been fabulous to take those through, and we've got some good compliance. So zoning and the code enforcement cleanup is still going good around the valley on that one. Overall budget, we're still looking good. We're still got quite a bit left in there. So we're watching that to try to keep that down as much as we can. Our biggest project that we're looking at, that I think we've got worked out, is the parking lot. Like I said, I've talked to all three of these commissioners, and I appreciate your time there. We're gonna work with Phil and start that in springtime, so we don't get it dug up this winter in the parking lot for that justice center, so that we can have that ready. Thank Rich for the time that he helped to get that RFP and the drawings and everything together, so we can get that out. So...
How long does he figure that'll take from...
That I did not ask him. I've gotta get the contract written up. That was gonna be my question, is we gotta get a contract written up. Do we want to pay part, all, or how do we wanna handle that payment for him?
Well, I'd say if we need to give him a deposit to hold the price, we do.
Okay. And then we'll just carry the money over that we've got for it. Okay. I'll talk with him.
That holds the price?
Yes.
He committed to honor that.
Yeah, he's committed to that, that that price will be in spring. But I do wanna, like you say, give him some deposit down to confirm and hold that to get it in schedule.
Probably now.
Yeah. In this next week, we're gonna try to, Thane was just trying to get the contract written up last week to get everything worked out. We'll need to work with Sam to see how, make sure we get everything in order for however much we pay him out right now, so that we're still in order.
A full half, probably a...
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is go half of it now.
Do you wanna go that much, or maybe twenty percent or something?
Yeah, I'll talk to Phil and see how comfortable he is, what he's wanting. And then if he has to start getting some of the stuff now before it goes up...
He has to lock in some prices.
Yeah. That way, he may be able to start buying some of the materials now before it does, if it does go up. So we might be able to get him a certain percentage of that. But we'll work on that details with him, work with Sam to make sure we get that covered. And then I'll get with you as commissioners before we have that signed, because we'll need you to sign that also, Paul, when we get that contract ready, so we know where we're at with that. The big sheet is our numbers that you see in our reports. That first covered it pretty much is we're down about seventy, seventy-five permits over last year. We've got a total, if we go to that bottom box on there, we've got total building permits for two thousand twenty-two. At this time, it's four hundred and eighty-nine. This year, no, we're off a little different. She had some other numbers. And then it's three hundred and fifty. So we're a little more than a hundred off from last year. Dollar amount, we don't have that figured out, but I think we can go through there and figure that out. My next biggest project, we've been hoping it would submit now, is our conditional, is our solar farm out in the Newcastle area. That will bring my dollar amount back into order where we need it. Numbers will be low, but the dollar amount for that permit will bring us back up where we're close to lying on budget there.
Are they likely to get that in twenty-three?
They were hoping to start it in twenty-three, so I have not talked to them again.
What's the name of that one?
What's that?
Do you remember the name of that one?
It's off of Antelope Road. I don't know.
I don't remember it off, sorry. But it's, yeah, it's a three hundred megawatt system out there.
With the batteries?
No.
That's not the one with the batteries?
That's just the solar panels and then three hundred megawatt of batteries. So we got two that's approved for both solar panels and batteries. Total combined would be six hundred. But there's three hundred megawatt of solar panels and then three hundred megawatt of battery storage that would go online after...
Batteries are later?
Yeah. No, I don't know. Well, they've got it at the same time. They're hoping they'll get the panels up and then move right into the batteries and get it one phased right after another.
Is that a, do you go through all of it at the beginning, or do you have two separate sets of...
There will be two separate, well, what we'll do is we'll probably issue three permits like we have on the others. We'll do a grading and then a solar, the solar farm, and then one for a substation, and then one for the batteries. So we'll have probably upwards of four permits for that solar farm. We're upwards between the two projects of a half million dollars. So, because we got a lot of travel on that one.
Lot of work.
Lot of work on that one. I've not worked with this company before, but the company submitting paperwork has been fabulous to work with to get that. So we're hopefully there in the middle of the design. They've got all their agreements with power company, everybody they needed.
Do they have any folks that you're familiar with, or is it...
I don't know yet, because we haven't talked to the construction side yet. And we've just worked with the guys, the development side and the company that's submitting for a conditional use permit. But that's our biggest one. We've got the one here out in Parowan Valley that was tabled from last commission meeting on concerns with health issues. That one is back on the agenda for next week.
Have you received any information from the...
I have not talked to Reed about that this week to see if he'd received anything yet. I know that there was one or two that had called and left him messages. So I don't know. I haven't seen anything come across my desk on that one yet.
There've been posts on Facebook about a guy that's supposedly, but...
Yeah.
How do you know if it's true or not? I don't know.
I know. And that's, yeah, because that night of the planning commission, I looked up both sides. There are no health issues. My wife read one yesterday on Facebook that come through.
In the same one?
So, yeah. So you're hearing both sides. Solar panels can be recycled. That's probably their biggest concern, is they're going to the landfill. No, solar panels, we've got enough valuable stuff in it that they can recycle it at the end. We've got a twenty-to-twenty-five year life minimum. After twenty, they're gonna start going down in the effectiveness, but they're still getting their money. They've already got paid for. They're still getting money and efficiency out of them to justify it. So we're looking twenty-five to thirty before they would have to do anything on most of them from what we're hearing now. So that's where we're at. Numbers are down. Dollar amounts, and I know we don't like to hear that, but we knew what dollar amount is. My permits are down some. Maintenance, Thane's keeping things up. We've got the stuff. They're supposed to start hopefully sidewalks, north and south sidewalks this week, is what he's told us. He's hopefully starting the sidewalks and steps on the north-south side of this one today, or this week sometime.
He, I don't know if you were gonna talk about this, but he had Matt Carter from the road department come over and weld on our railing, which was great. We appreciate that.
No, I wasn't, I knew Matt was here.
You wanna give Matt a natterboy?
No, we wanna give Matt a natterboy, because it's been, we've had a lot of help from the road department, and we've tried to help back and forth with the road department. We've loaned Thane a couple days to the road department because they're short, had guys on vacation. So Bruce has been good. I figured, thanks for the county. I gotta let Bruce have him for a couple days. So road department, Bruce and his guys have been good to help Matt come over to help get those welded on last Thursday, I think. So trying to get some of those. He's gonna try to...
We've still got some more to do out here, right?
Yep. He's gonna, he's got some Bondo and rusted with cleaner to get those bonded up.
Is he just welding plates over the rust, or...
He's gonna look at it. Thane was gonna look at it and see if he can clean them up enough and how sturdy they are. And then if he needs to, he was gonna go that route. If not, he was gonna bond them and then repaint them and see. So we might have to put new brackets on these front ones, too.
But Matt actually did some fabrication on the south side. It turned out really good.
We'll need to weld something on them. They're too big of holes.
Thane actually did a lot of that, and then Matt helped him. So, yeah, they were together good with it. But no, I haven't looked at it since that. So he's trying to get these railings done around here, especially these ones out here where they wanted to start this week. So Thane's gone through. He's got the CJC looking good. He's got, done a lot of help up there on keeping them up. We've tried to go through the buildings. He keeps up with them. We've got the window scheduled for the visitor center store to get that replaced this week.
Oh, that was with that leaking problem?
That leaking that we talked about, yeah. And that big, just that show window out the front. They've got that, gonna pull that out and try to get that leak fixed. Gonna see where we're at with that one.
We should appreciate Thane at the courthouse. He's been really responsive.
Thank you. And he's been fabulous since he's come on the maintenance side. I hated to take him from Bruce, but I think that's the best thing that we've ended up doing is going with Thane. He's kept up with a lot of stuff. So anything I need to worry about? Okay, one thing I had questions on, is there any major thing we need to look at for budget that we need to address? I know the generator, we're looking at that, and I was gonna go talk to Luke about the budget on that public safety building and see where we're at on that budget there. Do we need to look at anything, the roof on that fair building? Put anything on that for a budget, for that roof and stuff?
The whole fair building needs to be...
We need to address it, but probably what we'll wanna do there is just get some bids and get some ideas, so we can start for the next one.
Is the roof, I didn't know much about the roof. I know there's some stucco issues and the wall cap where the stuccos cracked.
And that maybe kind of combined, it was really, it's been leaking a little bit.
For years.
For, yeah.
And they've had people come to look at it, and they just, they're having a hard time identifying...
Yeah, with that foam stuff they've got on that roof, it's just been hard to try to figure out what's going on, where it's at.
Have you had Jamie look at it? Jamie Edwards, he's really good with roofs.
I haven't yet. I'll do that. See if they can walk over.
We had Tiger Grimshaw look at it.
He looked at the stucco and stuff. He looked at the roof a little bit. I don't know that he's done a lot with roofs, but he's looked at the stucco. He's given us some ideas. So I was gonna get with, try to get with a couple.
He said there's a new paint, too, that you, so we could get rid of the blue.
Yeah. Yeah. And there's some different stuff. So I'll look at that. I don't know that we'll get that on the budget for next year, but I'll see if I get some numbers before we meet with, on the budget stuff, and then we can have some ideas what we wanna do on that one.
Yeah.
I don't know of any other big items that we were gonna look at. I was...
The jail.
I wished I could do something there. I could get some more permits in, so we could do something. But yeah, and I know that's the big one. That's why we're trying to see what we can do. Okay?
Yep.
Alrighty.
Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
I almost took my phone near Bruce, and I figured, that's a mistake. He'll call me.
Rich?
Hey, good morning, commissioners. I'll just keep this brief. We, we were very happy with the lack of trouble through the monsoon season, July through last, is end of this month. We were able to handle whatever we were getting. Of course, the previous months before was the runoff. We survived that very well, which allowed us to dovetail quite well into the monsoon season. We had some rainstorms and things, but no channel was breached because of any lack of maintenance. There were some incidences that were localized around the rain and the homes that were affected by that. And Cedar City had their own incidences, but the county was fine. We've worked on Coal Creek to reopen any of the silt that was deposited from the spring runoff, along with Shirts Creek. With the approval of Alex Meisner, we've been able to widen Shirts Creek from his property to the west, west of four B, which has been a real advantage to both us and the homes out there. The access study on the belt route is complete. We're looking for a follow-up with for a report. We've just had a hard time getting all the players together at the same time to hear how that report came out and what the suggestions were for access along the belt route. But along with that, we've, we've acquired properties on the belt route because of our known location and have a commitment from four of six property owners now to acquire additional property along the belt route. And a seventh property, I'm in discussions with the owners on, on the purchase of that property. We, we had several opportunities to explore that property. It's a forty-acre, I mean, a twenty-acre piece, but the owner wants to sell it outright. So we'll just have to move forward at that. It's on the market, and the best time to buy it now is now while it's on the market.
Can we use corridor preservation funds to purchase that?
Yes, we'll be using corridor preservation funds, which we have permission to buy the six properties. So we'll go forward with the four, and we're just...
Could just sell off that other additional property for a twenty-acre?
There are some, there are some things that will need to be addressed with that. One is it is a twenty-acre parcel, so this is going, it's, it's going to be how the county, for lack of a better word, creates the two separate parcels on both sides. It's twenty acres, and it's about three acres is what the belt route will take through there, which will leave seventeen acres, which is under the size allowed for R twenty. And, but we have some thoughts in the works for dealing with that, one of which is to amend our ordinances, which allows for public good, that lots created for public good become non-conforming lots, but legal lots. And, but we don't have a, Reed has told me, we don't currently have an ordinances allows that. We have one for public good, but not more than ten percent for dedication to public good. This would be more than ten percent.
Are there any neighboring lots that are any other zones, or is it just A twenty in that area?
It is A twenty in that area, and that will be our case in several locations.
It'd be a little bit more of a challenge to say, well, we're gonna change the zoning or...
Correct. So it would be, it would be a challenge to change the zoning, because it would be an isolated situation in all A twenty area, all the way around it. And so it makes more sense to, to consider the public good with the belt route, because it's going to affect those kind of lots out along Three Peaks area and north of forty-eight-hundred. And so sometimes it isn't gonna be a a challenge, because they're already more than twenty acres. But where we hit a twenty-only acre lot, that's going to reduce its size and make it non-conforming. And we want to live by the same rules that we require of the citizens.
Would it be possible to maybe approach the neighbors and see if they would like to?
That will be the next step, and to incorporate, yeah. So there are several approaches to it, John, and those are good questions, which we've explored. The, the goal, though, is to obtain the property while we can, and the owner is willing. So right now, I've ordered an appraisal for it, so that we have an idea of what that is. That's part of the corridor preservation fund steps, is to have a appraisal. So... We've worked on quite a number of things, just bigger, small projects, one of which is we put in a drain system for the Newcastle. Curtis did. I helped very little. Curtis put in some what we believe to be adequate drainage for the fire station, which the fire trucks will be able to pull in and out and drive over. What we did was we created a sump type of situation, backfilled it with large, large material, and then put three storm drains on it to receive the water in a low point there. It needs a little more dressing up, but I think the goal there with Commissioner Cousins is some paving, which will blend in. Is that correct? Sometime that that will be paved?
Well, maybe someday.
Someday. But right now...
Probably not for a while.
Right now, the water's gone away, and that, that was the goal, that we didn't have a spot where the water, we dug down, we overexed it, got into the sand by four feet, and then backfilled it with a large four-inch minus.
How deep did he go with that?
Twelve feet. Eight, eight feet to the sand and four more feet we, we went further. So we created a...
You feel like it'll perk good?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, once, now that we're into the sand, it'll perk very well. And like, we put those stormwater cones on it and, and stormwater caps. We I need to talk to, to building about sharing some of that cost. Right. Hey, I paid for it, so.
Just tell him you'd rather owe him than beat him out of it, Terry.
Right. So are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Did we get the, there was that irrigation over here in Parowan on that channel that was exposed? Did we get that covered?
We need on that today.
We are, yeah, we're gonna try to meet.
Okay.
So I've talked to Larry Pen Gal.
Pendleton.
Pendleton. And, and others, and we're hoping to meet today about relocating that irrigation line, fifty to a hundred feet out of the channel.
A few minutes.
Okay.
After the BLM meeting.
Yeah.
Mary Lee, did you talk to her about calling everybody, see if they could meet?
I've been hopping. So as soon as I walk away from here, I'm calling Mary Lee to have her call the other, other...
You know, the other thing in this valley, those two culverts, those two box culverts that keep that one fills up all the time, because they're, aren't they like six inches difference?
Yes.
How hard would it be to dig that one up and put it back where it's level, so they both flow properly? Is that gonna be a major deal?
There's a couple of reasons. One is the difference in, they're not equal in their height. It's also how the channel comes into it. It approaches it with a slowdown on the southern channel, east, east-southern channel. So even if they are at the same height...
So the velocity's different, so one fills up more.
Yeah.
So it's not just the height, it's the velocity of the water.
Right. And as soon as it begins to slow down, it slows down more, leaves the material and it slows down, and it's quite quick. It has been cleaned on both ends again, so it's just an ongoing. The best solution would be a single culvert.
A what? Single?
A large, single culvert without the, the difference in elevations.
It'd be pricey, though, to change.
It is very pricey. Very pricey.
One that large.
How long does it take him to clean that?
How long did it take him?
To take him to clean that out?
Well, he can't reach in there and actually clean the thing. So what he does is he, Curtis works a little upstream and then downstream to give it somewhere to flush out to. But this time, there wasn't a...
I've seen him pull big tires through those to clean those out. Could we do a huge tire to pull that gravel out, or...
You can get the tire to flex enough, so when you do that on a little one...
It'll flex.
Flexes.
But a big tire won't flex at all, will it?
It's too rigid. It usually ends up, you're pulling the culvert or tearing the culvert.
So what we...
So a box, a concrete box is about your, you'd have to do a concrete box to fix them to that are, that you're particularly focused about, is a concrete structure.
And Curtis reached out to Dan to see if he had any used cattle guards, because that'll work also, pull them through like, I call it flossing the culvert. But Dan didn't have any available up here in Parowan, so... So we just, and we never got enough water after cleaning it to flush it out. I'm sure next spring we will, so if we're prepped for it and watch it, it'll self-clean, just with the volume of water. It's just an ongoing issue, Commissioner, and I'm not sure that barring having a, for lack of a better word, a span bridge, that we would be able to handle it.
What about tearing it out and just doing a dip, like we've done in other places?
That's always, always controversial, but it's certainly a low-water crossing works, because the sky's the limit on those.
Right. Maybe that's an option.
We talked about it before. Wasn't there a gas line or something right there by the...
There, there, there is a gas line, but we would be... There, there, there is a gas line, but we would be okay with the gas line, cause the gas line dips down through.
About that in the past, making a low water crossing there. But you have the same thing. You know, there's gonna be debris there. You don't, you don't eliminate the maintenance of it.
Sure.
Yeah.
With the low water crossing.
Exactly.
You'll have to be there and absolutely shut it off when it's, when it's too high. That's what, this one over here in Parawan works really well, but you have to physically shut it off and say, can't go through here at certain times.
Right.
And that certainly happens with the low, low water crossing.
Sure.
We've talked about it several times.
Good.
Yeah.
Selected not to do it so far.
Okay.
Right. Maybe we can, um, if we're careful, we could save those two box culvert, cause they are very expensive to buy them.
Right.
So. Right. We, we'd be cautious, but it would be nice. Yeah.
Okay.
It's an ongoing challenge. Keeps us busy.
Oh, yeah.
Spent the week with, uh, the Forest Service this week, uh, helping them up at the top of fourteen with Mike Worthing's project. Found out that's done, so we're good. Uh, Bruce contributed there.
It's all done?
Couple of trucks.
No.
No, they're not.
Just Curtis's parts done? I drove by the other morning early and saw him working there, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's been a big job, bigger than what we thought it was going to be originally.
Well, yeah, Curtis called me and said, I didn't know I was hauling them off also. Yeah, he thought we were just gonna stack them.
Oh, we had to haul them away?
Well, they were, that's, that's what.
So Bruce sent two trucks to help with that.
We were gonna stack them.
Why can't we stack them and burn them during the winter?
We did stack them, which is what we're.
Yeah, they're just not stacked in the location we were looking for, which was. Yes.
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, yeah, we didn't haul them off the mountain.
You didn't have to haul them off the mountain.
No.
It's pay free firewood and have somebody cut them up.
Ah, they're not real great for that. Huh?
They've got a whole system where they stack the little ones on the bottom, big ones on the top. They won't take a day to burn them.
And two black biscuits to keep them burning.
Yeah. I have one more question too, a, a peak view. Did you, you were looking?
We, we've reached out to the owner of that property, uh, next to it. Have not yet heard back as of, as of Friday. We'll find out if they've reached back and, uh, I think it's a, a very viable solution. I was talking to someone in, uh, Rancho Bonita about their concerns because, um, it just, it just keeps giving to the next community.
That's the problem.
And so it's better.
Stormwater?
Stormwater.
Stormwater at forty eight hundred in peak view. What it did was it crossed under, under forty eight hundred and then it fills off the backside of Rancho Bonita into their, um, detention pond.
Detention pond.
By forty eight hundred, you made mid-valley.
Mid-valley, yes. I'm sorry, I use them interchangeably.
I just wanted to get it colloquially, uh, okay.
Yeah.
And there was, uh, so basically stormwater over or under forty?
Under. It just, it just trickle flows under and it comes out of, uh, uh, it's, it's, it's not just, um, a peak view that, that, uh, adds water there.
Above.
Right.
It, it keeps right on down from, uh, um, everything north of, uh, Five Town. Basically feeds into there, uh, one way or another. And we, yeah. And I did confirm Commissioner on that, that, uh, from where we'd wanna pick it up at the, uh, Webster ditch. If we tried to take it to the Stevensville ditch, it's a, it's a ten foot climb. So that would put it at the bottom of that channel, which would just be asking for it to all come.
Right. It would.
The other direction. So.
Kinda like our problem at, uh, what's the subdivision?
Oh, Flying L.
Flying L. And the, what's the, what's the other one on the, I might have a brain freeze on that name. No, not Marne, the one on the, it's Cedar City in the east side, Gemini Meadow. That same problem with that. The, the drains go right to the bottom of the ditch and they don't drain.
Correct. And, and Bruce and I were out there. We'd like to deal with that three thousand though. We think we can get it out and over to, the challenge is that we no longer control the Coronado property, the city does. I've been in conversation with them that, uh, with Jonathan about what are they going to do along Stevensville ditch? Now that they have, uh, people interested in developing that property between, uh, Monarch Meadows and three thousand.
Right.
But, uh, we found the fall. What, what would be good is if we could put a, uh, a sister ditched to the west of, of Stevensville until we got enough drop to put it in. So we just bring it off of three thousand, run it parallel to Stevensville ditch and then drop it in uh, as the, uh, elevation changes in our favor. Because it wouldn't take much of a ditch along, uh, as a sister ditch running beside it to the west. But it's, uh, getting cooperation from the property owner and others. That's always a challenge.
Yeah.
And I understand it.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions?
Good.
Good. Thank you, Richard.
Appreciate it. Bruce, Public Works.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me be here. Um,
Morning.
We'll start with the roads. Um, we're working on, we're still working on the MOUs for the gravel up on Cedar Mountain and in Newcastle and in Gold, Gold Springs to, to apply, to get that gravel. Our Gold Springs is all done, permits are paid. We're just waiting on the arche- archaeological study. And that's on, uh, Sitla property. Um, the Newcastle thing is still going forward. We worked on it. The, um, the four of us went out to Newcastle and met with, or to Enterprise and met with the family. We're still haven't nailed everything down exactly, but we're really close. I talked with Sam last week about that. And then our Cedar Mountain, we have, uh, Ron, Ja- Ron, what's Ron's last name? Thompson has a piece of ground that has really good gravel on it that he's gonna just let us use. Um, also Escalante Farms over by Black Mountain is gonna just let us use the gravel out of there. So we'll get them MOUs done, just so that if something happens, we know that it's always there and it's wrote down. Um, we've chipped the Hart Road in Newcastle and forty one hundred west in Cedar Valley. Um, forty one hundreds flushed and done. We've still got, Bob was doing some harvesting out on the Hart Road. So we don't have it flushed yet. There's a piece that we have, we're out there this morning and tomorrow morning we'll finish flushing that, but we didn't wanna be in the way of trying to do that while he was harvesting the corn and the, and the hay at the same time. Um, I just wanna tell these guys thanks. We did use Thane and Grant to help chip. It was nice to have. We, uh, we, we just needed some more help during chipping. It went pretty smooth. Other than one day, our chipper broke down and then Jeff let us use his for half a day and we was able to finish. And then we helped them the following day with, uh, with our distributor. They finished up and we did the, the oil work with them and our trucks. He gave, Jeff gave us two trucks to one day.
Jeff Hunter.
We used, yeah. And then we used our trucks with Cedar City the following day.
That's nice where you can help each other.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a good deal. It's a good deal and everybody gets along, saves everybody money. It's a, it's a smart win-win. Um, the things that we are gonna work on is the realignment of the Jack Rabbit Road up in Cane Springs. We still don't have the archaeological done on that yet. Um, but that's, and then the realignment with Gold Springs Road. Um, and as Rich said, we're up there building the parking lot off of fourteen. Um, all the trees are moved. Curtis was able to move them. All the gravel's crushed. All we, Mel's gonna go up there and, and, uh, he's got the contract to do.
Clark.
Mel Clark, yeah. Mel Clark Construction's gonna be up there doing the, the subgrade and then we'll haul in the additional foot of material and compact it. I really don't think that it'll get paved this year, but it will be next year. It should be close. We'd be able to get it really close and then just make it safe throughout the winter and next summer. Um, we still have to go back to seventy seven hundred west. That's the one we're gonna build up and chip again. That'll connect fifty six with the, with, uh, we're gonna do all the way across. It's partway done, but it'll go all the way to Vandenberg. And so it's three miles that'll be, it'll be connected. Um, right now we're working on skim patching. They are gonna flush coat in the morning, skim patch in the afternoon. It's supposed to warm up this week in the afternoon. So we can still skim patch. We've still got quite a bit of skim patching to do. Um, we just hired two new employees. They're not here yet, but that just makes us down one. So we're down one still there. Um, we've had, I think, three come on in the last three months. So things are, we're, we're getting better. Um, our budget's pretty close. Uh, fuel's a little high. Obviously fuel's a major contributor to our budget, but, um, I think that's it. Any questions for roads?
Bruce, I went out the other day and looked at that, uh, material in the pit.
Yeah.
That reject stuff when they crushed.
The rock.
Can we use that under those Connex boxes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
You know, I talked to Terry about having Thane and Bruce or George go out there today and kinda start laying that out and see what's gonna work and, cause I, my understanding would use three high boy Connexes and two canopies for, and I actually talked to Ryan Riddle and he said he wouldn't mind if we just put his up there too. So if we have, if we have room for three of those, which would, which would be four containers, if we have the room from where you, where you drive through that gate, that opening going west, um, we might wanna shift those south enough to where you can still make that turn without encro- you know, encroaching onto that box. But, but anyway, um.
That's good material for that. It's.
I thought that'd be perfect to drain good and.
Drain good.
What do you think, six inches of that maybe or?
What's that?
Maybe six inches of that? What do you think?
What do you think about, um, have you done anything on your cement that we need to pour for your, for your, uh, salt?
We haven't. Well, George was gonna get a, he was gonna get a bid or something. I haven't talked to him.
Okay. Yeah.
We need to get three bids for that. That, this be, what, what are we gonna do? Like, eight, is, are eight foot walls high enough or do you wanna?
I think so. Uh, well, I think you'd have to do an eight foot wall.
And then?
Very part of it. It'd have to be probably a ten inch wall, because you're gonna have pressure with the loader pushing into them rather than an eight inch wall.
Yeah.
Um, I went and looked at the states. There's this ten foot tall and ten, ten inches wide, but I don't know.
I go ten high and say hey?
Yeah, because theirs is a little different. We just have to, I haven't talked to George for a while.
Need a footing? Do we need a footing under that wall or?
Yeah, you'll have to have footing.
And then you wanna pour a slab too? A concrete slab so you can scoop it up good or?
Have to.
Does it need a?
Wouldn't it?
Yeah. Yeah.
You'd have to.
Either that or maybe even some asphalt. Just, the salt's so hard on concrete.
It is. That's true.
So hard on concrete.
Is it?
Wouldn't last long.
With the asphalt?
Yeah.
A little better?
Through it just a little bit better.
Oh, maybe that would be the thing to do.
Yeah. Once the salt gets on there, it gets hard. It kind of creates its own, its own level course if you.
I wish we could've got that done for this winter, but it doesn't look like we're gonna.
Yeah.
Get it.
I don't think.
Too much going on.
We got a lot going on.
Yeah. Be nice to get it done next summer though.
Yeah.
Maybe start working on the MOU to get.
To get the concrete done.
Yeah.
That's kinda what I thought.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any other questions on road projects? We did get the parking lot done, I guess. Maria probably already told you that we did a little parking lot for, when I say little, I mean.
Big.
It, you know, that was a good project because we had so many new guys. We could take new guys out there and you really can't mess stuff up. You're like, hey, push this with the loader and it was a good training ground.
It was good. Um,
It's really good.
In the minutes it said acquire, I don't know, we didn't really acquire it. We, it's still BLM property.
Right.
Um, we acquired it to make a parking lot, but we didn't actually, we didn't, they didn't give it to us or anything.
Still BLM.
It's still BLM property. They can use it for their events too.
But that Three Peaks has been, there's been a lot of events out there. It's a win-win.
It is. Really good deal.
That bike thing they had was huge. And then there's been something up there about every weekend.
Yeah.
We've been.
Then there's, the state one is in October. So that, that'll be a really big one. That's the one that they really needed the parking lot for, but they probably used it for this one too, didn't they?
Yeah.
Did that come out firm enough to drive a car on?
Oh, absolutely.
Once you grade it, it, it packed right down?
Yeah, they'd leave a print, but it's not bad. It actually, it actually went really, really good.
So you just, you just grubbed it and?
Yep, just scrubbed it, pushed the stuff off. We haven't hauled it off. Hopefully the BLM will haul it off or.
Leave it?
Yeah. Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, there's so much dirt in it. We can't burn it.
Yeah.
Burn, I don't think.
It's just turning into a lot of stuff, you know, when you move that much age, it's highs, highs this building. Well, as high as this roof anyway.
Yeah.
It's probably eight or 10 feet high all the way across there. It was good.
Good parking lot though.
Yeah, turned out well. Um.
I think that's.
The, I think that's it for roads unless you guys have a question.
Nope.
Um, moving on to landfill, um, we got a couple of new employees and everybody's working finally fully staffed out there. Our newest one was Jordan Hatch, I believe. Um, we've had three new ones out there in the last couple of weeks. But we're fully staffed out there now and, and doing pretty good. Same thing, our budget's okay, except in the fuel business. We're a little, we're a little deep there. Um, we got our new John Deere loader. It's here and we're expecting a roll-off truck in the fourth quarter. Um, we're, I guess we're really not changing the routes. We're working on, we, we've had record heavy days on our Tuesday and Thursday. So between Jeremy and I, we're just gonna add trucks to it and keep it on Tuesday and Thursday. So we don't have to go through a, we got enough guys now that we can just add additional guys to go help pick up trash on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Wednesday's also every other week. Um, we're doing, Jeremy and I'll do the fall water sample. Tomorrow we have to do for the state. Um, we did get all our state stuff figured out with the permits and, or with the year end reports and quarter of the reports. They changed the way they did them, but we got that taken care of. Um, but yeah, if you wanna go to that next sheet, this is a good indicator of, of, the landfill's always a good indicator of economy, just as Terry is too. But for twenty twenty-three, from the first of the year until now, we've done forty two thousand tons, forty two, three, twenty-three. And last year we did forty two, three, sixty-three. You can see that our, our yards are up by two thousand yards from last year. So we're probably a little bit more than, than we have been. But not much. We're really, really evening out. This is the first time in, since probably two thousand thirteen that we haven't had a large uptick. We're just kind of evening out year to year. Um, especially if you go down to line number four, class four, there's only eighteen thousand tons this year. And last year there was nineteen nine, almost two thousand tons difference, well seventeen hundred tons difference. So that's, that's home building stuff. That's teardowns. That's construction and demolition is what that is. So we have evened out. You can see over on the far right that even though we have, there's places we've been able to make up that money. There's seventy five thousand dollar increase from this year to last year. But there's also been, that was because of the change in the, uh, the cost of, of the construction and demolition, help pay for fuel and, and processing. So first time in a long time that we've evened out and haven't came up. But our, uh, you know, there's still more houses. So we're picking more stuff up on Tuesdays, Thursdays and Wednesdays. So any, any landfill questions? Cruising right along. Okay, thanks Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
All right, Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Blake, you wanna go?
Sure. Um, I reported on this last time, but we're, uh, still working with, uh, tourism with Maria's office. We're gonna coordinate between, uh, the, uh, Shakespeare Festival, uh, and SUU, uh, for some ongoing uh, commercials and, uh, kind of an ad campaign to promote the local discount. Um, it's actually a five county discount at the Shakespeare Festival. Uh, it's buy one, get one, basically, well, they're basically half price tickets, so not even buy one, get one free. I guess that's how it works out, but they're half price tickets. Uh, this year they extended those. They used to just do it, I believe, on Monday through Thursday. This year they expanded that to, uh, every day. Um, that's been in place forever, but is very underutilized. Uh, so that's something that we've been working on to try. That's been in place forever, but is very underutilized. And so that's something that we've been working on to try and get that word out. But that you'll start to see some ad campaigns and such that we're working with Maria and some local folks. Last Tuesday, I had a special meeting. Did the official canvas on the election, got that certified. Had tourism board meeting this last week. We are in the process of working on the 2024 grants, small or event grants. I believe those applications went out. Those applications are due back the end of October and we'll hold those grand interview meetings. And award those funds in November. These are grants that go out to organizations. They have to actually be a governmental organization. So Cedar City, Parwin, Brian Head, Canaraville. Those type of organizations go out and these grants cover. How different, you know, in, in the past, we've been able to put. Get some new bleachers at the ballparks. We've been able to cover the bleachers at the ballparks with the kind of that canvas stuff to, to provide some shade. And protection from getting dinged in the head with a foul ball. Utah Summer Games in the past, we've provided a lot of equipment and things like that. So that process is just starting. I was asked to sit on a, a transition committee for the Utah Summer Games. Moving forward with their new administration and kind of the retooling of the games. We were able to meet, well, I met with John Oglesby the other morning to talk about. He was asking for some help to bring cornhole into the 2024 Summer Games. I was able to make some introductions there with our local cornhole tournament folks. And tentatively appointed a commissioner of, of cornhole for the, for the Summer Games.
Nice.
To help coordinate that event. That's something that, that bring, I mean, it'll bring hundreds of people in, especially once they kind of figure things out and get up to, to full capacity on that. That'll be. I think a good boom for the Summer Games, you know. Sports like cornhole and pickleball, things like that where folks are able to. All ages and all capabilities are really able to participate in those events. And so I think that'll be a pretty cool event to see. Be affiliated with the Summer Games. SUU has launched a couple of different initiatives this year, one of those being a, I don't know what you'd call it. Basically a fundraising campaign for capital projects. I was asked to participate in. Kind of a focus group, but not really a focus group because it was a one-on-one interview with some of their fundraising people to talk about. Community engagement, things like that with the university and be able to, to put. Some, just input on, on what's important. For the, for the university to. Work on community engagement, some of those things. So you'll kind of see that fundraising campaign move forward, I assume over the next however long. Attended the awards banquet for the, for SUU homecoming. This year they honored Kent Myers, Don Marchant, Steve Lang, and I can't remember the other guy's first name, Dr. Garlic. As, you know, outstanding contributors to SUU and in public service. That was really pretty cool. Coming up on the fifth of October. I've been asked to participate in the committee with Cedar City Corporation, the hiring committee. For a new economic development coordinator and director to replace Danny Stewart. That's a, it's going to be big shoes to fill. So we started out, I believe, with twenty-two applicants. It's been narrowed down to five. At this point, and the committee will do interviews on October 5th. That's scheduled for all day, so we're. I don't know that there's a more important position out there to make sure we get that right, so. I'm glad to be, to be part of that. The One Utah Summit starts next week, which is a, it's a conference really. Takes place here in Cedar City. County governments, business leaders, all sorts of folks from all over the state. Participate in that. I've been asked to present at that conference on the inland port and the. Cooperation between county and state and private entities for that inland ports. Been asked to sit on a panel and take place, it takes place at that event next week. I was able to attend the sheriff's conference, the Utah Sheriff's Association Conference with Sheriff Carpenter. Down in St. George last week, a big focus was talking about the border crisis and. Really the effects. It's honestly terrifying to, to look at what's happening on the border. It's just not good. Also had an opportunity, Babcock Design and Leighton Engineering, Leighton Engineering, they cut me for that. Leighton General Contractors, they both were, they were sponsors of the sheriff's conference and so all their representatives were there. Just had an, an opportunity to meet with those guys and talk. Lot of one-on-one time to talk about jail stuff. So that was good. That's about it. Leave it at that.
Thank you.
Starting this week on the 27th, we will have our first annual Color Country OHV Jamboree. An ATV ride that is going to be. Put on by the county, Iron County, and we're excited about getting going on that. We're hoping that that can be an annual event. There's fifteen rides all over the county out west. I think they've shut that down now for, I think they have about a hundred riders. And so they have that shut down. They may take more next year. But I'm excited about that. They sign up on the 27th and then there's rides on the 28th, 29th and 30th. And of course they give away prizes. They've got great sponsors. I know DNP Performance is one of their big sponsors. And so that's going to be really fun this week. We got to stop up to the five mile. They've been working continuously on, on that five mile. Camp, picnic area and they are just doing a fabulous job. Mike Worthing and, and. Parks and Rec. Bryce Williams has also been working on that a lot. We're planning on opening, opening that. In this, in the spring to use, renting those picnic areas out. On the north side of the, of the area and then they'll continue to work on the south. And, and I know that Pendleton Construction got the. Bid for, to rebuild the pavilion, so we're excited about that to see what great work he can do on that. Because it's historic, so we're excited about that. And that's about all I had.
Okay, thank you. Got a few things. Commissioner Wood and I traveled the other night to Fillmore. They had a centrally assessed meeting, Senator Dan McKay. And Darrell, Darren Owens came down. It was really good of them to come down. We had commissioners from. This, the southern end of the state that attended that. It was nice of Fillmore to Millard County to sponsor that event. They fed us, fed us a little dinner and. And we had a chance to just express our concerns with centrally assessed. What's been happening in our counties. All, seems like all counties in the state are struggling with this huge tax shift. That's happening from the centrally assessed, you know, you have, you have the major utilities, Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion Energy, you have mines, you have.
The railroad.
Railroad. You have all kinds of different centrally assessed and those are, those are companies, the state assesses their valuations. And, and they pay taxes to the, to the counties and, and that's dwindling a lot. And so. We talked to these two representatives on what we could do. They, they are, they've actually opened some bill files. They've, there's been some. We've talked to our representatives, Representative Ship, Albrecht and Senator Bickers about this a couple of times. And so it's, it's, it's starting to gain some momentum. On what can happen to help the counties with this, with this challenge.
John, John also, John Whitaker and Nicole also. So there was four of us from Iron County, which was really nice. I felt, that was really good.
I had my CDB, I serve on the state community development block grant board and I had that meeting this last week. It was good. I also served on a, Commissioner Blake was talking about Babcock and Leighton being in St. George, traveled down and. Served on a five-member committee talking about the jail cell selection. We, we, we took proposals that were given to us by three different companies that actually make the cells themselves. One company fabricates those back east and trucks them out. The, the other company that was in the running was one that they actually set up shop right on the site. We provide. Three acres, they pour a slab and they actually pour and fab those, those cells right on site. And so there's some. There's some advantages there with no shipping. They're very reputable companies. There was a third company that submitted as well, but we, we went through a. A scoring sheet with the five of us and it was, it was very interesting, but so, you know. Moving right along with that, that process with the, with the new jail.
Who did they pick that?
Pardon me?
They didn't pick it yet, right?
They haven't picked it yet. We, we priced it based on a lot of, a lot of variables and a lot of criteria. But we didn't get into pricing yet. Thursday, we're going to have another meeting on actual bids and pricing. And that'll weigh heavily on, on our final decision on who we select. That's a, that's a long process and you have to get in line. It can take up to eighteen months just to get those fabbed into you. So. We realize that there's a bond coming up on the, on the ballot and that may or may not pass. We hope it will. But just in case, you know, whichever way it goes, we'll have that decision made so that we can continue to move forward with that process. We had our, our five county behavioral health and human service council meetings last week. They went well. And not too much report from them. Pretty much same old stuff that we discuss each time in those meetings, so. Other than that, that's about all I have. It's a little after 10. Let's, let's take a break till about 10:15 and we'll resume our meeting then. Thank you. I'm just gonna make sure we're- We good? Okay, we'd like to welcome everybody back to our ten o'clock meeting, it's a beautiful day, we appreciate your attendance, um, in this process. We're gonna, we normally just go right to our public hearings as they're noticed that way, but we're gonna sneak one agenda item in front of those real quick and that is item number eight, which is the Miss Iron County and Miss Iron County teen will be introducing themselves in their community service initiative, so if we could have them go ahead and present. Karen Anz, thank you.
Hello. Um, first off, I want to thank Iron County, Iron County Commissioners for your wonderful support throughout the five years I've been doing this. Um, it's greatly appreciated, this year we were able to bring onboard Southern Utah University and Southwest Tech to help with our scholarships, so this will be the first year that our winner is able to receive a scholarship and go to Miss Utah before they had to pick one or the other, so we're excited about that. Um, in the past, uh, our Miss Teen has gone three times and two times have made it up to the, the seven, the seven finalists and uh, those two girls have brought home around a thousand dollars in scholarships from that competition, so. Um, we're growing, we're trying to get bigger and get more girls involved and so again, we appreciate everything that you do for the program. Um, I'm going to introduce to you Dolly Cobb, our Miss Iron County, and then after her, Nicole Jacobson will come out, Miss Iron County's teen.
Hello, good morning, I'm so excited to be here. Um, I'm just gonna take this time to introduce myself, I'm Dolly Cobb, I'm originally from Enterprise, so not too far from here, but I'm here at school, I'm a senior at Southern Utah University, I'm in the education program, so I'm getting close to student teaching, which I'm really, I'm thrilled for, it's a great place to be. Um, my community service initiative this year is all about bringing mindfulness into the public classroom and really just pushing the idea that children are never too young to start taking care of their minds and learning how to take deep breaths, simple things like that, that are truly great tools growing into adulthood and dealing with a lot of stress, so I'm truly thrilled for all the events we have planned, I'm planning a mindfulness month for the schools around maybe February of next year, we gotta put all the details together, but it's gonna be a great year, I'm excited, I'm excited to work with Nicole, we've got a bunch of community service ideas in place, we're gonna visit the old folks home here in the next couple of months and take them some things and it's just gonna be a great year, so if you ever need an extra pair of helping hands, we're, we're here for you, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have any questions for me?
Oh, good job.
Perfect, thanks, you guys are awesome.
Too tall for this. Hi, my name is Nicole Jacobson, I am currently a sophomore at Cannonview High School and I am involved in their drill team, it's so fun being a part of that team and my CSI is perfect as you are to implement the dangers of body shaming and making sure that everyone knows that they're perfect the way they are and they don't need to change to be like anyone else and I plan on implementing that by going to the schools and talking about you are truly perfect the way you are, you don't need to change and going on social media and really spreading on there, cause that is definitely the biggest contributor in today's society and my upcoming service, or my next upcoming service activity is going to the old folks home like Dice says and taking them cute little Halloween goody baskets and just getting to know them. Any questions?
Oh, awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
Good job, thank you very much.
Can we get a picture?
Let's put one in between one of us.
Things are awesome, thanks.
Yep, yep.
Oh, perfect, yes.
Great way to start our meeting. Um, we'll go ahead to our public hearing section, uh, item number one, this will be a public hearing discussion and possible approval of a proposed zone change from agriculture twenty acres, A20 to residential five acre R5, it's approximately forty-one point three nine acres within the section that's described in the agenda and uh, this is, um, the address is near nine hundred north, north, North Lane, Canarville, Utah, parcel number E dash three oh nine dash eight, applicant is Enic Partners, Reed.
Good morning Commissioners, I'll introduce briefly, the item has been before the Planning Commission, I received a recommendation for approval for rezone, but I'll introduce the project and talk a little bit about what some of the concerns and, and issues are around this item and then lay out a couple of uh, possible options. Property is located just north of Canarville, uh, you're familiar with the area, this is a map that, this is the zoning map that shows the property zoned R1 to the south of it where the star is, this is the forty-one acre piece. Uh, Bumblebee Springs Road is uh, also known as twelve hundred north on the north side of the property, there are some uh, lots, ten acre, uh, twenty acre lots that just run to the north, run north and south right there, north of this property before it hits twelve hundred. The property is currently zoned A20, uh, this is the transportation map that shows that the road along the east-west side of the property is a county maintained gravel road, the property on the north, or the road on the north, Bumblebee Springs is a gra, is a chip seal, uh, county maintained road. So it qualifies as a minor subdivision uh, because of its uh, access and that it is accessible off of a county maintained road. But for a zone change, of course, we're just looking at feasibility and we're trying to identify what the issues are centered around, how likely it is that this property could be developed as a, a residential five acre, or if it were rezoned to R5, what could occur there and whether it's feasible to do that based on the current circumstances. And so that's what we're looking at as a zone change, you know, that at the end we, we put up the list of all of the considerations for a zone change and look at those things which we should evaluate and, and evaluate feasibility to see the likelihood of it being able to be developed. And so, one of the concerns that we have in this area, uh, besides the, the size of lots because of the recent septic tank density study that we've done is the flooding in the area. Uh, unfortunately, we don't have a more current FEMA flood map than nineteen eighty-six and that's what's on uh, the right, the FEMA flood maps showing on the county website and then the comparison proposed FEMA flood zone map, which were the maps that were prepared in two thousand fifteen that we proposed to FEMA to show flood plain. Uh, and a lot of people say, and they use the term flood plain, if the water gets wet, it's in the flood plain and we have a lot of areas in the county uh, that, that are, get wet and there, people say they're in the flood plain because they get wet, but the flood plain designation by FEMA is a, is a designated area because of the depth of water and the regularity of water that gets on the property and they're currently evaluating and reevaluating Iron County in terms of what the new flood plain uh, designation should be. Those are the areas under which you need flood insurance and that's their program and why they do flood maps is to when flood uh, um, insurance is required and eligible based on the, the current flood maps. So flooding, of course, in the area, we know that the water goes on the property, this is looking back to the east, um, on the left side for, that's the, the Bumblebee Springs Road looking back to the east, right where the, the irrigation or the drainage ditch along the south side of the road here, then on the right-hand side turns and goes down. Um, these are just some photographs and we have some more showing that this property is the property on the left, so this is looking south, uh, on the uh, what they call the North Lane Road out of Canarville, looking down towards Canarville, the property is on the left and obviously has water on the property.
Reed, is this during the spring runoff?
Uh, yes, uh-huh, but it can occur, not just limited to-
Monsoons too.
Yeah, spring runoff, this occurs in the summers as well when we have monsoon rains in different times of the year. But it, it obvious that water goes over the road on, on the lane and uh, there, there's significant amount of water out there. Uh, I'll show a different elevation, this just shows um, for the very bottom of what you see there where the two little dots are and there's two on the right and the elevation down there at fifty-two oh two, that's off of Bumblebee Road, Bumblebee Springs Road and that's the elevation, you can see from that elevation to the very one on the north at fifty-four sixty-one, there's over forty feet of fall, uh, from there out and the, the very north one is the um, Edinburgh Road, four thousand south. So historically, water that came out of Quich, or um, Canara Canyon crossed and went up through there and you can see the old historic maps that show how this water uh, went out across here, uh, you can see here over to Quichapaw and it just kept going to Quichapaw, this is an old, let me go back to that one. Um, and so you can see it just kinda worked its way through the north, went along the interstate and of course with the building of the interstate and building up of twelve hundred and four thousand, you know, we've, we've altered, uh, not just we, but all roads that get built, built up and water gone, goes in different places and it's a, it's a result of kind of what's happened over time without really knowing what all the ramifications could be in the future and we just kinda handle water where it goes and the way that flooding has worked is it's just gone where it's always gone and then when there's a diversion or something else happens, we try to be more aware of that. And as we talk about development and one of the concerns that we have is, uh, we, we require, in, in dealing with floodwaters, we require water to be, to be able to enter the property and exit the property at its historic locations and its historic flows. Now that's important because every time development occurs, we create more impervious uh, surfaces, have rooftops and driveways, uh, and there's less ability for the water to absorb and so our requirement in development is that they would have to calculate the amount of area that they are hard surfacing, they- They will retain that water so that it's not released at any higher flow than what it historically did at the historic levels and the historic locations. So when we look at a flood plain and we try to evaluate the impacts of development in a flood plain, we require that they retain what is, how they've created as additional impervious areas and to maintain the historic flows at their locations and their levels of flow. So there will be more water that comes off of a property every time we do any development. The issue is whether it is diverted to a different location and whether it increases the flow, which can then cause problems down the road. And so that's what we want to make sure we're aware of and as development occurs, whether it's feasible to do that and whether we have enough information at this point to say yes, we're ready for development or whether there are other things that we want to study and do before we're ready to do that. Here's the historic 1986 FEMA flood map that just shows the actual, the map itself, not the counties taking it onto the county website. And then there was a handwritten, the area down here where we're talking about, the property is located just right here. And you can see that they recognize additional water out in this area. These additional photographs just show the area. This is probably the best one to show, this is the property right here. So the north half of the property probably gets a little more water than the south half of the property does. This is looking west from the, just a little bit west of Old Highway 91, looking west. You can see Bumblebee Road, Bumblebee Springs Road. Here's the interstate right here. Here's the overpass. And so the interstate runs along here. And this is 1200 or Bumblebee Springs Road.
Were these pictures from this year?
Scott sent these to me from the Coronados and they're the Springs pictures. I understood that to be the case. And so you can see the area there that gets, you know, they're just, these were additional photographs that were given to me by Scott Garrett. And they just reflect the water, obviously, in that area and that it runs out. Unfortunately, these don't really show the property to the south and that's where this property we're concerned is located. But we know that this water going a little bit further south gets onto this property. You can kind of see it here as it runs out to the southwest and about, runs about across about half of that property, the north half of the property, even though at times it can cover the entire property. So this is simply the request, the map that identifies the property. And we've talked about flooding. Let's talk just a little bit about sewer and water. And the zoning itself, to go to R5, the property is not adjacent to the R1 to the south. And so in order to, in the tier two area, and I've just mentioned that in the, this other map to remind you of what the tier two area is. The heavy dotted line is the tier two boundary, which is the area in which properties can reduce density below 20 acres. They have to be in a tier two. And the tier twos were created in proximity to municipalities with the expectation that they would be able to get services in the future, that that would be an anticipated growth area of municipality. It hasn't always worked out that way and especially in some municipalities that don't have the interest in growing. The counties tried to coordinate with the city and the towns over the years. And we've evaluated whether or not this area should have a tier two that far north because of Canarville's interest in limiting growth that direction, well, in all directions from Canarville. But we try to balance that with also what is reasonable and a property right of a person in that area next to a municipality with an expectation that they could have a higher density and residential density than what they may have in further, the way that we, as we go further away from the municipalities. And so the tier two is, it's been in our general plan since 1995 and gives the expectation that there will be an opportunity in the future that there will be higher densities or opportunities for higher densities in that tier two area than what is in a tier four area, which is outside of that. So within the tier two area, there is the opportunity, if you have at least 40 acres, if you're not adjacent to the zone that you're trying to achieve, which is R5 in this case, and there's no R5 in that area. If they were adjacent to R1, they would have the opportunity to rezone to R1 or try to do that. But if you have at least 40 acres and you're not adjacent to an existing zone that you're trying to rezone to, then you can rezone to any zone that qualifies for the tier that you're in, which is, in this case, qualifies for R5. Now, as you're aware, with the density analysis study that we did recently in Canarville, the recommendations from the Utah Geological Survey and those adopted by the county were to limit that area of growth to 10 acre lots. So it would require 10 acre minimum to have a septic. R5 is the only zone that we have. We don't have a 10 acre zone. And so even those properties that are currently zoned R1, if they were to subdivide, they wouldn't be able to have one acre lots. They could only have 10 acre lots because that additional, you can look at it like an overlay. We have an overlay in that area that has a specific zoning requirement or a density requirement to it because of the septic. So they'll be limited to four lots on that 40 acres if they rezone to R5. Just wanted to clarify that. Now, there is always the expectation and the question that they can say, well, ultimately in R5, you can also have a guest house. So it's possible to have eight residences on that, on those four lots because each one in R5 could get a guest house. Our percentage of guest houses on lots in this area, you know, are very, very limited. Probably less than 1%, certainly not more than 5%. If we were to just guess, I haven't run the numbers because it changes by zone and by area, but in that area, we haven't seen a lot. Recognize that the potential is there. They could have that many units and it's allowed by ordinance as an administrative land use permit. They could apply for that. We have also considered creating a sewer district in that area and we certainly need to continue that discussion to determine who could evaluate and monitor and permit special septic systems that could do some pretreatment, that could allow higher density than just the one per 10 acres. And so there are a lot of things to consider there for the future and density of septic is certainly an important one. That's why we did the study and we're concerned, you know, with Canarville and the amount of density that they have and on half acre lots and the ability to build out the rest of that and the amount of septics that that'll put in the area. And so, you know, that's certainly a consideration as well. So water, of course, would have to come from a private well. There is no other water systems available in the area. Canarville wouldn't extend their water that far and they don't serve outside of their municipal boundary. So it would, and with four lots, they could do a non-public water system with one well in the area. So it's feasible to do water with the water rights that they would be required to have. They have good access. There's a good access road there. Drainage and maintaining historic flows, we've talked about and it's probably one of the more critical considerations as we evaluate this. And so that really is an introduction to the project, what some of the issues are. I think after the public hearing, we can discuss a couple of options that I could explain in greater detail.
Thank you.
Any questions before we go to public hearing?
Nope. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open a public hearing regarding this issue. If you'd like to speak, please approach the mic and state your name.
My name is Verl Prestwich. And my first question is to Mr. Erickson. If they had guest houses, would they be approved on that four ability to have just one well for four residences?
It could go up to seven total connections to one non-public water system.
Non-public, okay. I've observed this property for over 70 years. And it isn't just the spring runoff that you saw in those pictures. It's summer floods and those floods are not always the same. I do remember that we had equipment, we had to move from the north, our north farm to the south farm when I was younger and even, well, I haven't done it for years, but moving that equipment, it would save me a lot of time to be able to go down what we called the North Lane, which is now the Bumblebee Springs Road. And during the, some of the cuttings, when we're cutting hay, I was not able to go down that road because it was so full of mud and there'd been so much water that ran across that road and also all down through the property to the south. And there would be good sized logs and rocks and things that would come down and be spread out there. The water would go, the water that went north would be clean by the time it got to Quichapaw. But the water going south was very dirty and it would continue to be dirty. Quichapaw's a long ways. So the water running south would be dirty even as it got to my place. So there's, and I'm below this property. And it would also be dirty to the south, further south. It's, we'd have some excessive floods through there. And they're not every year, except we would have some flooding almost every year, but not the big ones. But the big ones would come periodically and it could do a lot of destruction. Tear out the flood control above the city, I mean, above the Highway 91, would tear that flood control out. And a massive amount of water would come through there and the county would have to have backhoes in there trying to rebuild that and trying to clean it up. And that still continues occasionally, but Coronados could probably indicate when the last one was washed out. So it's, it's a, it's a serious problem to deal with. And I'm not sure there's a specific idea on how to do that because you try to retain the water, you're gonna be filling your basin quickly. It won't be satisfactory for, to hold very much water. And also you don't know the size of these floods. So there's a lot to take into consideration. I would suggest that you hold off on this until more, more study could be done. The other issue I have is for the people of Canarville, as you continue to allow developments in this area, you need to recognize it's a small basin. It's not like Cedar City where it's large. It's small and I suspect that very many subdivisions are gonna pollute the water to the point where Canarville's probably gonna have to move to hook onto Cedar or St. George or somewhere or have some kind of a treatment program of their own. Currently, their well is very clean. If you look at the different wells and the amount of pollutant nitrate you have, that one near the mouth of the canyon where the water's coming down all year long is a cleaner well. And as you get further west and further south, they're more polluted, as I remember. You'd know more about that and correct me on that if that's not correct. But anyway, I would suggest that you recognize this is not something that just happened once. I mean, there was four feet of water sitting in the field north of Bumblebee Springs Road just a few years ago. And it stayed there most of the summer. It was a lake. So, and that same amount of water came south because the road had been put in there, but still it was close to four feet of water, as I remember. You might need to correct me on that, but it was a lot of water. It was a lake there nearly all summer. Anyway, that's what I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Warren Lewis and I represent the Lewis, the property just north of the property that is in discussion. And I appreciate you, the Commissioners, for the time that you guys spend in officiating and, in a more layman's term, babysitting. Babysitting the people's problems. First, I'll address the, I get them mixed. The Zone 20, when a person buys property that's zoned 20, then they do, they should do their due diligence to what can and can't be done with that property. Now, myself, we have that property that it's a Zone 20 and we're not even 20 acres, so that wouldn't even allow us to build a home. So there's property, then the Beagleys that are just one lot east of us, they are on the 20, and they bought that knowing the conditions that it floods. So people buying property that's buying it in a flood zone and then bringing that to you guys to try to change so they can do something with the property that the property doesn't, is not even zoned for. You're trying to, you're trying to put commercial, not commercial, sorry. You're trying to put a higher density residential in a flood zone. It's really kind of simple. If you look at keeping things simple and not confusing, you can justify all kinds of actions, but is it simple and is it less complex? Listening to, having a chance to listen to some of the other concerns that the county gets to address is flooding is a big deal. Managing the water that goes through. Well, when you, when changing the zoning of property changes the impact of the, of the things that you guys get to try to address or have to address and try to come up with a, come up with a solution. Now, myself being excavation, I solve people's problems all the time because people come to me and they have problems that they're trying to address. And so I come up with solutions and help them, address them and fix them. The easiest thing I see here is it's a Zone 20 acre piece. It stays a Zone 20 acre piece. People buying property knowing that it floods and they've known it for years. Earl has just given us, he's seen it for 70 years watching it. We've owned our piece of property since the early, just barely 90, around 90. So that would be 30 some years, 35 years that we've watched. So people buying, I'm not opposed to the growth and, but a person buying a piece of property should buy the property in a manner in which, what it's used for, not what they think they can change it to. Because it affects all of us around it in a negative way when we bought the property going, okay, it can only, we can only use it for this. It's Zone 20. So having something that's zoned and then trying to change it to something that's a lot higher density, watching the property, the flooding, I have pictures also of it. There isn't 20 acres of that property that's not covered with water when it floods. You have over half the property that's covered with water. So to change that to an, let me make sure, R5, I think. You're now changing it because there's not a, as this brother said, there's not a 10, so it's a 5. So by changing that property to a 5 is going to make it possible for the properties around it that are already, that there's property between myself and Beagley that would be changed. And half of that was covered with water. So if they're gonna change, if you make a change of that, So if they're going to change, if you make a change of that, then that sets precedence for the rest of the properties around to change. If you do that, that escalates this a lot more than what is being said. They're saying that they want to do one thing. And what I have found in my own life, as soon as somebody tells you they're not going to do something or that they only want to do this, there, it's a smokescreen or it's just a blatant lie to your face of what they really want to do. Leaving it in R20 protects what's there. You have a, it's a flood plain. It floods. Changing it to anything other than that creates more problems than you guys have enough problems on your own plate. So adding to your plate of frustrations and problems and trying to figure out how to handle floodwaters. It's in more people's best interest that it stays at 20 than it does to change it to a 5. And it affects, uh, um, I'm not very good at this. This is the second time that I've been involved, so I don't really know what all you're able to do, what you should say. But I recognize the problems that are had. I recognize the problems that the, that the county has and that the problems that you good people get handed to you to straighten out and try to figure out because somebody is justifying their actions of wanting to make something that it isn't. There's a lot of things, you can talk about the sewer, we can talk about the impact of the water from this and from that, but it doesn't change the fact that it's a flood area. And that we're going to see more and more flood. The floods are going to increase due to the fact of the growth because the water is being consolidated and it's going to go to the point of least resistant and it's going to increase. It's my recommendation that it stays 20 and not be changed. It is, and I would think that it's even in the, the best interest of the people around it, and not only the people around it, but the county also. It gives a place, that water is going to go somewheres. And it's already been established that it's a flood zone and that it's, it floods. And for us to try to, when you try to contain water and direct water, it's a very tricky deal. And you have a lot of people as yours, as yourselves, because it's going to be, how many phone calls do you guys receive when it's flooding, that this is your problem and it's not the, the people that bought the property. It's kind of like the people that bought the property really close to Quitchippa Lake. And when the waters rose, they had a moat and their house was halfway out into Quitchippa Lake. This is one of those pivotal times that we're going to, that this is not Quitchippa Lake, but it's the same concept and it's the same principle. So.
Okay, thank you. Morning commissioners. Nice to be back in the commission chambers, albeit in a different capacity. Um, just briefly, I won't take very long. You've heard a lot of the points. Scott Garrett, sorry. You've heard a lot of the points that are, I think are, uh, relevant, you know, to this property. I think that one of the big things, lots of times, uh, property that's, that's subject to zone change, pretty simple that it, lots of times goes through, but not every property sits in an area that floods all the time. I think that's, that's what makes this property different. I would call it a flood zone, but, but Reed has shown some pictures to suggest it's not actually labeled as a flood zone, but, uh, you know, you've seen that, and we've heard testimony that it floods, uh, every year. And so I think that's the big concern. Um, I know, you know, I mean, just looking forward, uh, down the road, were you to approve this zone change, I could likely see this scenario happening where somebody builds, they get flooded, they want to sue, they're, they're going to sue the developer, they're certainly going to sue the county as well. And the situation that you'd find yourselves in, in this particular zone change is that you had knowledge of, of the flooding. The county knows that, that this floods, and so that's a problem. Not only do you have knowledge, but you also have a little bit of participation in, in helping, assisting the flooding because of the road that was built up. Not, not intentionally, but when you, when you built that road up, it diverted some of the water, uh, forcing more of it to, to go back onto this property. So you, so there's knowledge and there's actually, uh, some, you know, assistance in, in diverting the water in that direction. And so I think there's some issues that you ought to consider carefully, you know, as you contemplate this zone change. The other thing is that this is, this property's surrounded by A20, it's A20 itself surrounded by agricultural. That seems to be the nature of this property. I get that, that on the, the general plan, it probably down the road calls for, you know, the fact that it can be rezoned, but it's out there in the middle of agricultural area and, and, and changing its use, you, it would be incompatible and inconsistent with the, the properties around it. Uh, and, and so, you know, for those two particular reasons, I would recommend that you deny the zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, discussion? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Reed, you can wrap it up.
This is the list of the considerations that we look at. And you can see, uh, there, uh, number two was what we talked about with the general plan and the 40 acre contiguous, uh, area that, that, uh, can conform with the zoning and, and, and what it's capable of and what it's, what the similar uses are. Mr. Garrett mentioned, you know, the compatibility. It, it actually does have 10 acre lots right north of it and adjacent to it. So 10 acre is really not that incompatible with the area, but I think you can look at that as also, uh, was mentioned by Mr. Lewis, that, that makes eligible other properties that are smaller than that, that could rezone to R5 as well. And so it does set a precedence for that area, which is important. So I think that as you look at all of those considerations, uh, you really have two options that were discussed heavily at the planning commission. I think option one is that you're totally within your discretion and a zone change, of course, is a legislative action. The commission has a lot of discretion in legislative actions. And as a, as a zone change, being a legislative action, you have discretion to determine in your best, uh, judgment, what is in the best interest of the public. That's the criteria, what could promote the general welfare. Uh, it's pretty wide open and you have, uh, anything that you, is an arguable, reasonable position is a justifiable position by the courts when they review zone changes. And so they grant a lot of discretion to the legislative body. So option one, I think, is that you could say that because of the flooding in this area and recognizing, uh, that we don't have a good study for the area and we don't have a good master plan to address flooding generally in that area, that there's some work that still needs to be done in terms of how the water's handled on the south side of 1200 and whether some of that should be going to Quitchippa and where, as water increases in that area, where is it going to go? Because it's not practical continued, practical to continue to try to put it where it's been going without causing additional flooding concerns as the water volumes increase. So there is, I think, a justifiable position that, uh, there is additional study that needs to be done in that area to determine where flooding, where floodwater should go and whether there's a reasonable expectation that we can take that back to Quitchippa and to the north where it historically went. Uh, more of a percent of what stays on the south side is causing this flooding. Um, and so I think that is an option, uh, a justifiable position for the county to say we're not ready to see additional density in that area. One thing I would say in relation to density in the area is that, uh, as we talked about guest homes and the ability to have the number of units, you could have four units on that property right now. They could come in, get a building permit for one house and then they could get three guest houses and there could be four houses on the property. Whereas if you rezone it, there could be a possibility of eight if everyone got a guest house. It's less likely that everyone on a, on a 10 acre would get a guest house, uh, and, and we don't see that many get four guest houses. We've had a few, but it's quite rare. The second option I think that you have is that you could say, you know, we address this just like we do any other subdivision in that it's the responsibility of the developer to take care of the floodwaters that come and have, has been historic on the property. They have to receive it onto the property at the same location that it's always come and they have to discharge it at the same location that's always discharged. And, uh, they have to be able to build their homes up and be able to, uh, take care of that floodwater where it will discharge where it's always discharged and is still able to come onto the property and can't be diverted off of the property. And, and it can be diverted around on their property as long as it enters and exits at the same location at historic flows. And that's been our policy for development in all areas, whether they have floodwaters on them or whether they don't. And so I think that if you felt strongly that the, the property right for a prop person to be able to go, do an expectation of development and, and seek a zone change and that four lots on there is not that much different and is, is fine for the area, then you're totally within your discretion to be able to do that. So I think you could justify either position and what's in the interest of the public good and the property rights and somebody trying to do something on their property, but also recognizing that there are ramifications and that the, the subdivision process would then require them to, if you took option two, to require them to be able to address that flood issue. And it may be even at a broader scale than just on their property in terms of how the water gets to their property and being able to address that on a larger scale. So, uh, that's a lot to put on a development, on one development when we know that it's not caused by that development. It's coming through that area and it's coming from offsite. And that's what we deal with on a lot of subdivisions, so. That's, uh, the two options that I think the commission has and are totally justified in either one.
This is a wildly inappropriate time to bring this up, but Verell said the water coming out of the north was cleaner and I wonder if down the road, regardless of what happens today, if there would be an opportunity for some recharge in that relatively small basin before it gets to the relatively sealed basin of Quitchippa. That's all I have to say about that.
I think that would have to come into consideration of if we did a flood study and what, what, where the water, that's why I say that where the water should go and where.
Well, the challenge with recharge is you have to have great big holes in the ground to take the water. And those, and those are gravel pits we've used that took 50 years to dig, so it's, it's, it's.
There's none in that small basement.
There's just not, right? And to create a hole big enough to.
It's essentially spreading it out on somebody else's property.
Which it does recharge some. And that's what we're talking about is that it does recharge some.
The water going out across this property and all the adjacent properties does.
It does recharge some.
My biggest concern on this is, is, is the pictures of the water and Mr. Lewis referenced the home at Quitchippa and it's not so much the water's inundate, the, the home's inundated, but it inundates your sewage system, your septic system and leach field is inundated with water and it stops functioning and your home becomes inhabitable because they have.
They float when it's flooded like that.
They have to move out because their sewer doesn't work.
Yeah, that's part of, part of the concern we have with, until we have a sewer district that can help, uh, permit special types of septics, because Southwest Public Health only permits a typical septic, septic system, uh, not one of the, you know, a mounded system or one of the other systems that, I mean, you can put a sewer system in a flood area. It has to be built up and there are a lot of things you do. And right now, we don't have anybody to do that, to review that and to consider, and, and they require additional maintenance, they require additional testing, they have to be pumped more often. Who, who does that? Who monitors that and regulates that? And so I think that's where a sewer district comes into play and that why it's important that we move forward in doing that to try to address sewer in this basin and in the Canara area. And as Mr. Presswood's mentioned, the, the time will come where there needs to be a central sewer system in that area. And then, you know, when you handle the flooding and it would be appropriate, this property could have higher density as well as around Canaraville. So, uh, those are some of the considerations the planning commission and staff have talked about. Any other questions?
No, not for me.
The other issue I feel like is, um, you put a well on there and flooding on a well isn't good either.
Yeah, wellhead would have to be raised at a higher level and protected.
Same, same problem with that, yeah.
I'll entertain a motion if we're ready.
Okay, I will do that. Uh, I would move to deny a proposed zone change from agriculture 20 acres, A20, to residential five acres, R5, approximately 41.39 acres. The description there, and this is addressed near 900 north, North Lane, um, Canaraville, Utah.
I would second that motion.
Do I have additional discussion?
It's been moved and seconded, any other discussion?
Yes, may I?
We need to.
No, I, no, it's, it's good. The motion is great. I, I just wanted to add to that. I think that there's an expectation that if a commission to, were to deny zone change, which the motion is, and totally justified, I think, uh, it would be incumbent upon the county to commit, to, to help solve the flooding issue that's causing you to deny the problem. I mean, you can't, I don't think can say, no, we're not going to rezone it and it's always going to be what it's going to be if it's just, if the rationale for the denial is because of the flooding problems. So I think that.
But if, but Reed, I, I may have an issue with that. If that's, if it's historic, like Mr. Presswood's talked about 70 years, that's, that's natural. That's, that's a natural event.
There's some natural to it, but there's also.
End of the road has contributed to some of the movement of the water where it goes, but, but if this has happened for that many years, I'm not sure we want to go on the record saying we're responsible.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we look at how to resolve flooding in that area because we know that it's.
I don't know if we want to, I don't know if we want to commit to that.
Well, I, I think that's your reason for denying the zone change, then, um, I think we, we do.
If you'd like to speak to it, Rich, I mean, did you want to say something?
No. No, but you can stand up.
You can stand up.
I really don't.
And what's your name?
Richard Wilson. Just trying to, uh, say what, uh, in support of Reed's comment is, is that, uh, that because that's, that's your reasoning, you need to perhaps add a little more to, to the denial than just simply say, it happens and we're, we're not going to look at it. But I, uh, the suggestion that, that we have a study going on right now by FEMA county wide and we'll, we'll, we'll see this when FEMA offers new maps in 2028. And we may have more information will be beneficial. Is that what you're asking?
And/or the, the developer recognizing that that's the reason for the, for the denial can also enter into that discussion and help evaluate flood issues and try to resolve that, to just more clarify why it's being denied and that there are options for that to change.
I mean, it goes back, Rich, to our discussion this morning about this parcel north of here. And yes, I-70 was built, or I, I mean, I-15 was built in the seventies, right?
Right.
And that diverted some water, but, but it's going across some property that we don't know that we want to take responsibility for, because it's happened for 53 years, right?
Correct. He's talking about a property we were discussing this morning in Paragona and, and whether we as the county want to be too, too heavily, um, anchored to, to future developments, decisions to develop. I, I would also say that, uh, we are looking at Quitchippa right now under similar situations where water has been historically going and creating a zone change there to prevent, uh, or to at least give building restrictions in, in those areas. And so this area here causes me pause and as Reed really, really well explained, that there are two ways to go on this. You could, you could go either way justifiably and you've already decided to vote on an, on a no cha, no, uh, change. But this property does cause me concern because, you know, we have witnessed quite a bit of, uh, though technically it's not in a flood zone, it is flooding from time to time. And until some of those issues are resolved, but, but again, back to what Reed was saying, giving the developer a chance to, to maybe offer options and why you're, you're denying it.
The county as a whole, and I'm not talking specifically commissioner. The county as a whole, and I'm not talking specifically commissioner about going out and saying, we're going to do a flood study on this channel and fix that. I'm just saying as a whole, the county has a responsibility for flooding. And as we approve development, we try to take flood waters and say, this is where you can put it. You know, this is what you can do. And that's what I'm talking about. Generally, we need to be looking at that area and saying, how is this going to be solved in the future? And as we're working with FEMA on the flood maps and as we're, you know, just looking at a number of flood areas that we're trying to do. We don't put a blame on this road caused this because I 15, we could be, you know, oh, we got a lot of issues with I 15 and flooding all over the county. No, we just say, look, going forward, what's the best way to solve this in the future? Because we don't want all properties to be flooded all the time. You know, we want to provide opportunity for those to maximize their opportunity on their property. And so that's what I'm talking about generally.
Well, we have a motion and a second. And before we call for, I call for a vote, I'll just say this, that I think in the well, years of public service, I don't know that, I can think of one other zone change that I've voted against and that's it. So it's not something I take lightly because I think there's property rights. But, but you have, you have people that go down and look at this property. If it is, the zone is changed. And you have people go down there, when it's beautiful and dry and it's, everything's rosy. But then the floods come and it's our problem. And we have enough problems with flood waters in this county. So it gives me great pause to, that's, that's where I'm at.
Can I ask one question that might give the commissioners a little more comfort? Is this a one and done or could, could the applicant come back again in the future to apply for another?
They can always come back.
So, so if they feel like they've whatever made to change.
Something's changed and there's an answer to the problem that they can resolve. They can certainly reapply.
So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor to deny the zone change?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, public hearing discussion of possible approval of a proposed minor subdivision. Hartshorn Minor Subdivision, one lot.
Yeah, I'm fine. Nothing to see here. I'm going to step out one sec.
Thing wires.
Wire catches foot?
Yeah, he got caught in the wire.
Wire.
Just glad he's all right.
We could probably go ahead and have the.
Go ahead.
Hearing, I, I think.
Right, so this is a public hearing discussion of possible approval of a proposed minor subdivision. Hartshorn Minor Subdivision, one lot, approximately one acre located within the description in the agenda. Near 110 North Center Street Summit, Utah. And the parcel number is D-90-91-97-109. Ben Balk is the applicant and Reed, go ahead.
Yes, this is a subdivision application that has been going on for a long time and has one small caveat in that it, it was an application that we received prior to the county designating the ones, the 10 acre minimum for lots in this area. And so they're applying for a subdivision in our one half to develop a parcel that is just a one acre parcel. You can see it's in the middle of this zoning of our one half outlined in yellow right here. It's just the very bottom portion of that lot. It has access off of Center Street, a good county maintained public road. The subdivision itself, this is just the whole lot and showing that little lot in the corner of Lot 1 right here. Welcome back, Commissioner. We won't particularly draw attention to your fall, but that was a good one.
Well, I was working late in here the other night and I needed tunes. And so I've hit, I found some speakers with IT and the cord's hanging down there. Foot's wrapped around.
So it's your own tune.
Yeah, it's my own tune, yeah.
So this subdivision, again, because it was an application, you can see the application of this, this original plat was signed October 13th, 2022. We, we'd made those changes to the R1 in February, March of this year. So it certainly was an application we'd received prior, vesting in the old zoning and the old rules. And we felt justified in moving forward with this. They've had a hard time getting their soils worked done and the engineer to prepare their plat. Actually, this plat came from Twilla. And so working with engineers there and it took a while to get some of the changes made. And so all in all, it's just drug on for a long time, but their application was still valid. And we can move forward. It complies with the requirements of the minor subdivision. And the planning commission voted to recommend approval of this subdivision.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this item. If you have a comment, approach the mic and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Again, the requirements have been met. They have done a good job in trying to address all of the issues relative to that. Have their will serve letters and all of their soil testing and everything. Letter from the water company at Summit to provide water. They'll be on fire flow with hydrant, so they meet all of the qualifications for the lot. There is a request for variation because in the R1 half zone, even though it's a one acre lot, curb gutter and sidewalk fencing, it's street lights are all required. They're seeking variation that we waive those requirements, given that there are none of those things in that area. And it wouldn't serve any public good to require those for this property. And that was the recommendation also of the planning commission.
Okay. All right, any other questions? That'll entertain a motion.
I would move for approval of the proposed minor subdivision, Hartshorn Minor Subdivision. One lot, approximately one acre located in the legal description as outlined in the agenda. The address near 110 North Center Street in Summit. Indicating that the variations include fencing, curb and gutter and sidewalks and street lights, just because historically those amenities are not present on any of the adjacent properties.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Number three, public hearing discussion, possible approval of an amended preliminary subdivision, Commerce Crossroads Logistics Park. Phase one preliminary subdivision, 18 lots. Approximately 341.55 acres, previously 522.10 acres. Located within sections as outlined in the agenda in Iron County, Utah. Address between 1300 North and 2400 North, Iron Springs Road, Cedar City, Utah. Parcel number E-144-6. Applicant is BZI Steel and Visco.
You're familiar with the property located off of Iron Springs Road? We've been through zone changes recently there. They had a grand opening of their site, given that they have a conditional use permit on the property. They, they have, they're seeking to amend the conditional, the preliminary plat that was approved in April. Because as about, as they've evaluated that, you, I was read on the agenda, they've reduced the, the acreage by about 200 acres. And the lots are very similar. They're just having some smaller lots now. Before they had 20 and 30 acre lots, now they've got five and 10 acre lots. And they think that it will just serve better to, to address some of the initial inquiries that they've had and give them lots through this subdivision that they can then amend and move lot lines and give people the size of lot they need. Recognizing in these industrial, light industrial and industrial properties, they don't really know. It's hard to, to predict what a particular client may need. Whether they need access to the rail, whether they don't, whether they need a five acre, a three acre, a 30 acre parcel. And this gives them the flexibility now by reducing their amount of infrastructure requirement by taking out a couple of hundred acres. The concentrating it in a smaller area and creating more lots that they can be more flexible and be able to accommodate potential customers more easily. And that is the reason for the change. Still requirements for water, sewer, all of those things that were required. It were just, this is a little unusual. We don't normally have an amendment to a preliminary plat because we don't have a final plat yet and we're not amending the final plat. But we could have just brought this when they were ready for final plat with all those changes. But because they were significant enough, we felt that it was justified additional review by the planning commission and inaction by the county commission to make these significant changes to the plat. And have a preliminary plat approved based on this layout and this number of lots and acreage so that then they can prepare their final plat. Any questions? These slides just show a little bit about the project outlined as where the conditional use permit was granted and where they're doing the offload and transload station currently. These are just artists rendering of what they expected it to look like at build out as part of phase one. And so I think that it, everything is covered. They, they have good access, everything there. And so I think unless there are questions, we can have a public hearing.
We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. There's any comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Again, they conform with the ordinance and requirements of preliminary plat and addressing flood, water, sewer, roads. Everything that's required as part of the preliminary plat.
Okay.
Planning commission recommended approval of these modifications with the variations for fencing and street lights.
Okay, I would move for approval of an amended preliminary subdivision, Commerce Crossroads Logistics Park, Phase One Preliminary Subdivision, 18 lots. Approximately 341 acre, point 55 acres. Previously 522.10 acres located, there's the location. The address is between 1300 North and 2400 North, Iron Springs Road in Cedar City. And the APN E-144-6.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We're gonna, before we go to the public hearing, we're gonna, we've messed with the agenda a little bit. I know Candace Reed has court at noon, right? Afternoon court, so we're going to let you go ahead and present next. Reed, was that it for your?
Yes, thank you. I'm just getting my disc out.
But we're going to let Candace go next.
That's 12, 12, 13 and.
You've got 12, 12 and 13, right?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm here for obviously for two reasons. It's Candace Reed, I'm the administrative public defender appearing. We had two public defenders that had resigned and we were able to hire two new ones. And so we're trying to get today, would ask that their contracts be adopted and signed. I also have a memorandum of understanding on the agenda as well, but I'll, I'll let you go forward with the contract question first or request.
Okay, was there any questions on those with, with you two?
No.
That will entertain a motion. And those, can you state their names for us?
Yeah, it's Franklin, I gotta get his name right, Catchkey. And then we have Ryan Nelson.
Okay.
That are replacing Troy Sunquist and Clifford Gravette in 5th District as the criminal public defenders.
Thank you.
Move for approval of the two public defender contracts as outlined by Ms. Reed.
Second.
It was a move in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Now, 13?
The second one that I needed to present today was the adoption of the MOU. We have to circulate this between the three counties. We started with Iron County. We, with the IDC, we partnered with the IDC. We request and seek those grant and funding in July at the beginning of the state fiscal year. And then we're just now coming back to adopt that agreement that we've, you know, we're approved to have those funds. Iron County agreed to, to accept those. And then we're circling back to get the MOU signed. I think in the future, we'd probably try to get this done in July when we're adopting the rest, but.
Any questions for Candace on the MOU?
No.
Nope. I would move for approval of the MOU between Iron County and the Indigenous Defense Commission.
Second.
It moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, everyone.
You need a copy of this, Candace?
I usually just get it from Chanel, so I'll, I'll connect with her this afternoon.
So this is going to go to multiple counties, so we'll want to have the original signatures?
That's, yes, that would be fine. That's what the IDC would probably prefer, but.
Do you have a reason to come back to Parowan or should we get, maybe I could send it with Sam?
Yeah, just send it with Sam.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Candace. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Hey, John, I had a question. I noticed that last night when I read. If I need to re-sign it, let me know.
He came back for us.
Well, the contract has it too.
Yeah, you better ask about that.
Yeah. Maybe Paul, before you leave for Cedar today, check with Chanel and I'll, I'll go over with her. Thank you.
Right. We'll go ahead with our public hearing regarding the amendments to the 2023 budget. Do. Are you ready, Luke? So what's, what is this on the agenda, public hearing regarding amendments to the 2023 budget? What's?
So.
You have to.
Yeah, so what you can, what you could do.
Do we do all?
Should we wait to do the public hearing?
We come back to that or?
Well, and I guess maybe Luke, I maybe wasn't clear. I, I think you can get up and actually.
Present?
Yeah, and I think this number six. I think number six could have been included with number four. I didn't realize that what we had done there.
Yeah.
Did you just lump it in with the other public hearings?
Well, no, it just, it could be part of the public hearing. So if you, if you would like, Commissioner, you could, you could ask Luke to do number six and then, and then hold the public hearing. And that way he can present and then have the public hearing and then, and then you.
Let's just do that, let's just.
Yeah, and I think in the future, we'll just.
Put that together.
And it, honestly, Luke, it took Dan and I a couple of years to get it figured out too.
And then Dan's gone, so it messed you up.
Yeah, sorry, Luke.
Yeah, my first time doing this, I wasn't sure.
No, right, and I.
The legal stuff that John had to put on.
Yeah.
On the agenda. Okay, so there's a list. Did you get my email? If you want to pull those up. And there's a bunch of different budget adjustments that we'll go through. I'll kind of just highlight the, the more significant ones. And then if there's any questions about any of them, let me know. Wait until John gets that. And like I said, this is my first time doing this. It's usually done a couple of times a year, usually towards the middle of the year and then at the end of the year at our last commission meeting in December. So we will do that again with anything that comes up between now and then. Okay, so on the first line item, this is an adjustment for additional grants we are receiving this year in the general fund. So throughout the year, we receive a bunch of different grants in multiple departments. And we don't know when we're preparing the budget last year, what grants we're going to have. So this is an adjustment for that. The second line item is funds we received from the federal government. And this was for the local assistance and tribal consistency fund. And we received this, it's, it's kind of like part of the COVID or ARPA money that we were receiving the last few years. So this is additional funds coming from them. The third line down. And one of the lines a little further down is for funds sent from the state to buy sandbags and sandbags, sandbag machines. When we were expecting floods earlier in the spring, the state was giving out some money to prepare for that. And so we did that. We have some sandbag machines and bought a bunch of sandbags. Luckily, we didn't have to use, you know, a whole lot of them. But, but yeah, that's what, that, those funds are for. And then down below, it shows us buying that equipment. So the account number, about a third of the way down, it starts with 10-4262. Last commission meeting, Mike Worthing got a contract approved to restore the pavilion at the Five Mile. So we did have funds budgeted for salaries and benefits in his department because he was going to retire and we're going to hire someone to train with him for a few months. I guess he decided to push that back another year or two, so we're not going to be spending. so we're not gonna be spending that money, so we're reducing the salary and the benefits down to zero, um, to use that money towards that project at the Five Mile, and then the additional money will be, um, part of his grants. The adjustment for the Southwest Utah, um, this is a payment that we make every year to Southwest Behavioral Health, and this is the two hundred thousand fifty-four dollars. And last year, when, when the budget was done, I believe Dan didn't have the amount that was gonna be, so it wasn't budgeted for, so now we know what that amount is, um, so we're budgeting for that. The transfer to Fund Forty-five is to transfer money to the jail fund, um, and we have known about this money and have received it all now. This is mostly coming from that, that money from the federal government, that L A T C F money, and we were earmarking that for the jail. And so we're budgeting to transfer that to the fund specifically for the jail. There is an adjustment for four hundred thousand, about halfway down, and we are transferring money to the Capital Projects Fund. This was budgeted back in two thousand twenty-one, but it was never transferred, so we're budgeting it now to, um, to refund the Capital Projects Fund. When they put in the new bleachers and did some improvements there, that's what that money was for then. So the next several line items are mainly adjustments due to different grants. They're not really too significant. If you have any questions about those, uh, let me know. And then towards the bottom, there's a transfer from our Municipal Services Fund Eleven to our Capital Projects Fund, and that's for three hundred ninety-four thousand, uh, five eighty-eight point sixteen, and that is to refund our Capital Projects Fund for the expenses related to building the new firehouse in Newcastle. So we spent some money on that and our capital projects, and we're just transferring money to, to refund that fund. Next line item is down to the end of the page. These are all grant-related as well. On the next page. So Fund Twenty-One is our road department, and we are adjusting their fixed assets and equipment, one hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty. It's a couple of line items down, and we built, or we're, we're going to build, uh, kind of a shelter where they have the Conex boxes and the shelter around it from phase concrete, and so we're budgeting for that. And then there was some equipment that was on a trade-in program, so we have to trade it in every few years, and then they give us a, a really good price on upgrading to a new piece of equipment, so it saves us in the long run. And when Bruce, um, was doing the budget last year, he was unaware of that trade coming up this year, and so we're just budgeting, um, for that. Okay, and then down towards the bottom, in Fund Forty-five, so we're adding one million to the engineering legal line item that is for the jail fund. Um, there's been a lot of work done on the plans for the jail, um, and then with the engineering and surveying the soil. So that will go towards those expenses this year. And then lastly, there are a few adjustments in the fleet department um, for receiving more revenue than we had budgeted and then having more expenses than we had budgeted. So they, they bill and charge all of our departments throughout the county, so if they, it's like our first full year, so we didn't know how much work they would have from all the departments' vehicles. So they're receiving more money and then it costing more for their supplies and stuff. Um, that's all of the, the main things. Any questions?
No, these are all, we're, we're kept pretty abreast of, of these things throughout the year. There's, I mean, no surprises. Is it, is it something that sprung on the commissioner a couple of times a year in this meeting? This is something that we all.
It, it's pretty easy to have to have adjustments. I mean, it really is, and, and we just understand that.
Yeah.
Important that we.
Had good communication with all the departments, so.
Yep.
It's going well.
So Luke has presented item number six, uh, but we need to have a public hearing on this, which is, uh, the gen item number four, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this budget revision. If anybody'd like to speak to it. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and call for vote.
I would move for approval of the two thousand twenty-three mid-year budget adjustments, uh, as outlined by our auditor, Luke Little.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Um, let's see, so that's seven as well then, right, John?
Well, and, and I think, again, I think we're gonna consolidate these better in the future, and I apologize. So I think the resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen covers that, but that's not what you just voted on, so.
Yeah, Luke, do you want me to make a?
So let's just do that another.
A new motion, right? All right, I, on item number seven, I would move, uh, to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, adopting the two thousand twenty-three budget amendments.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, that probably should have been all together.
Oh, they really should have been. And Luke and I will get better at that as we go.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's see, we've, uh, we've got two, number eleven, no, no, no.
I wonder if.
Wait, 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 five, I'm, so.
I think we're bounced to five, maybe.
Oh, nine, well, let's see.
They oughta go back to public comments.
Five, public comments. Hey, we're back to public comments. Is there anybody'd like to make a public comment today? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, now where I'm so, let's see.
Nine.
Nine, presentation of tax exempt status for Cedar City Hospital. Eric Packer, thank you for your patience. Sorry.
It's our pleasure to be here with you. My name's Eric Packer, administrator at Cedar City Hospital. Thank you. And every year, we like to come just give the commissioners a brief update on our hospital and, and what's happening. So let's just go ahead and, we're gonna move through the slides rather quickly. Um, our mission is helping people live the healthiest lives, uh, possible, and that's really what we're all about. The footprint of Inner Mountain is, uh, has expanded and it's fairly large. For us here in Cedar City, we're part of what Inner Mountain calls the desert region, which is outlined in red, so that encompasses southwest, excuse me, southwest Utah, some of, uh, or most of Nevada and Arizona, so it's a fairly large, uh, footprint. Let's keep going. Our ambition is to be a model health system, uh, which is really to keep people healthier, uh, for less as we look at it from a financial per, perspective, and then just providing the best care we possibly can at the most, uh, affordable costs and try to just create a great experience for our people. Uh, we're a not-for-profit, uh, uh, facility, which means, um, you know, we wanna, again, provide excellent care for everybody regardless of their ability to pay. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. So a little bit of information about the facility from last year. We have five hundred and seventy-four caregivers, we're licensed for forty-eight, uh, beds, we have a hundred and one active medical providers, and we have a lot of different specialties that they're spread throughout. So last year, we had eight hundred and fifty-two babies that were delivered, uh, over thirty-three hundred surgeries and over twenty-one thousand emergency room visits. Um, on August seventeenth, we're just talking about some of the water and the floods and everything else that's transpired. The hospital experienced extensive, uh, flooding, and we're still trying to survive, uh, some of the impact from the flooding. This is in the rear of the hospital, back by the, back by the dock. When it panned over there to the left, right there through that garage door as you're looking, is where our boiler room is with the boilers and chillers and, and everything. That room flooded, which, uh, had me pretty nervous there for a while. We had to shut down the chillers, the boilers and everything for a period of time until we felt it was safe to get everything back up. And the flood also caused us to cancel our elective surgeries, uh, the next day. This was on a Thursday, so Friday, we had to cancel our elective surgeries because we didn't know if we'd get the steam boilers up to be able to sterilize the instrumentation and, and things. So here's just, uh, some additional pictures of, uh, you know, we had water kind of approaching the building from three different sides. You know, it's kind of coming over the curb off of Main Street, coming down to the hospital, through the field down to the south, and then down the Northfield Road in behind. And on the south side of the hospital, you can see where the caregivers are actually sandbagging. So yes, we were the beneficiaries of some sandbags and, and other things, so thank you, and thank you for the help of George Colson and, and whatnot. But, um, water was just seep, seeping through the walls, and so it caused extensive damage. So if we go in, this is like our infusion area there on the east side of the hospital, and the next one is our chemo area. This is how they sit today. Um, and all the patient rooms along that south side across our med surge had to be totally stripped and cleaned and.
Have you had that kind of flooding before? Never. I don't ever remember.
We've had once in two thousand and eight, we had an issue where it flooded in, back in the dock area a little bit, but it never came close to being as deep as we had this time. And, um, so we've got that rooms closed down, and again, it's not as easy in the hospital just to get everything back up after you've stripped it down. We have to do a lot of testing, make sure there's absolutely nothing that can have a negative impact on patients in the future, and then start putting it back together. So we're just getting to the stage to, to put things back together, so. Probably it's gonna be another while before we get it all back together. Um, a couple of things we have going on around the, the hospital. Uh, right now, we're expanding the parking lot there on the, the north side of the hospital, just because we don't have sufficient parking. We'll be expanding the emergency room here in two thousand twenty-four, and, um, so just a lot of fun things that we're working on to expand and help enhance the care that we're, uh, providing. So go ahead, let's go to the next slide. So this is our, uh, Board of Trustees. We try to have a good representation of our community and, and get their perspectives, and it's really a strong, diverse board, so I'm pleased with, uh, the work that they do. Again, as we come and talk about our, uh, property tax would be about seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. Our charity care last year alone was over five million dollars, uh, that we provided to people within our service area. So we're, we're pleased with the support that we're giving. So you can see the charity care was almost, uh, ninety-five hundred patients. Anyway, when I talk charity care, I'm talking, we're adjusting that down to kind of be equivalent to what the insurance would pay in most cases on average versus just a gross amount to inflate that. So I think it's a very real number, capital improvements, you know, one point six million dollars, and then we had about over four million dollars of just uncollected bad debt. So some other, uh, gifts to the community, uh, some of the community service and education, eighty-two thousand dollars. Financial support we've provided to clinics, serving some of the understaffed populations, over four hundred thousand. Health professional education and volunteer service, you can see the numbers, uh, there. So I'm just gonna invite, uh, Jordan Merrill to come up just for a second to talk about, uh, some of the things we're doing with our community health needs.
Thanks, Eric. I'm Jordan Merrill. Um, I work in community health, which really focuses on, on everything that goes on in the community. And one of those things is, is we get our input from the community that drives our health priorities for the next three years. Every three years, we do this, and, um, we, we pull in people from the health department, governments, officials, um, communities, the schools, and then just, we, we get a, we, we take a general consensus of the community on what they view as their highest health priority needs in the area. So for the, this is the first year of our first three-year plan, and, and it's improvement to well-being, um, social determinants of health, and improve, um, chronic and social conditions. So those are, those are some of the things that we're working on. Um, if you'll go back to the last slide. We know that one of the things, many of the things that impact health aren't just, you can see clinical care, things where you break your arm, you're sick, you're, you're, um, have health issues, where you come into our hospitals and clinics, um, it's only ten percent. The other ninety percent consist of other areas of your health, consisting of genetics, um, your individual behaviors and, uh, social environments. And so as a health system, we really are trying to address those things and try to make an impact in those areas, uh, in our communities, however we can. And those three priorities are what, what, how and, and, and what we do to do that. Um, and the drivers that influence that are, um, looking at, uh, adverse childhood experiences, um, internal influencing, internal, um, public policy that, that we can be a part of to drive for the right health causes and to improve those chronic and avoidable health outcomes, and then addressing social determinants of health. Those are, those are things that you'll, you're here, you, I don't think that we're gonna hear an end of these topics, social determinants of health, where it comes to housing, food insecurity, all of those things come back to social determinants of health. And as a health system, we really try to make an impact through partnerships in other areas and through some of these donations that Eric has talked about. Um, and these are some of our cash donations that we've had. These are just a few of the ones listed, um, that we've made, that are cash donations in our, our local community here in Iron County. There's others that aren't listed that we've worked with and, and worked with the, the commission to, to do such a wonderful job, like with, uh, um, Iron County Children's Justice Center and the, the property there, by turning that over. That was a big one. Um, some of those things to, to really im, impact and influence the health of our communities are things that we will always be a part of in our community.
All right, just real quick, just as a reminder, we have state and federal regulations for our tax exemption. In the state, there's six tan, six standards that have to be met, and I'm just gonna go through those real quick, 'cause I think you're familiar with them, but just as a quick review, so go ahead, John. Um, the hospital must establish that it's organized on a not-for-profit basis, promoting healthcare and providing healthcare. Okay, you can just keep going. Uh, we're organized on a five oh one C three. Uh, along with that, go ahead. None of the institution's, uh, net earnings and no donations made, and earns the benefit of the profit of the shareholders or the other individuals. Okay, um, the institution must admit and treat the public without regard to, uh, race, religion, gender, et cetera. We have, go to the next slide. We have a lot of signage around the facility, registration, other places. Uh, to try to reiterate some of these points and let people know that we're, uh, there for everybody, not just any one specific group or individual. Um, the institution, uh, must establish policies that integrate and reflect the public interest. Again, we've got a very strong governing board that really represents the community well to us and, and provides information and helps us understand what's happening in the community. And we do submit a charity plan every year to you. The institution, uh, must establish that its total gift to the community exceeds its property tax liability. And then this last one really doesn't apply to us, 'cause we don't have any satellite healthcare facilities. So I just wanna say it's, uh, you can go to the next one, but it's a privilege for us to, to work closely with the county and, and provide sort, support to the communities that we serve, and we're grateful to you for all your support that, uh, you give us. And I'll entertain any questions.
I don't know that I have any questions, but we, I sure appreciate everything you guys do. It's a pleasure to work with everybody there.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your great care and your support of our community, Eric. Thank you, and others, other staff that's here, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, we'll go ahead and, uh, let's see, now, this just says presentation. We don't vote on this today?
On the UDAF?
Uh, no, on the, on the tax exempt status.
Oh, yeah, no, there.
No, just the presentation.
Just the presentation only.
That's a, that's one, that's one thing they have to do each year, and they.
Right, but we, don't we, do usually approve that? I mean, do, or do we just have a presentation? I've thought in years past, we've approved it.
I think that comes down to, um, and maybe Luke can correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it's the presentation that August makes. Oh, yeah. 'Cause there's, there are other tax exempt ones that, and they'll, they'll go through each line item.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, okay, number ten, uh, discussion and possible approval of local consent permit for a single event. Fear Fest Halloween Festival held in October, on, on October thirty-first at the Three Peaks Oasis, uh, Zion Live Entertainment. Please state your name.
Hello, Commission. Hello, Commission. I am Andrea Naya. I am a member of Zion Live Entertainment as a promoter and marketer. And on October 31st, we are having a Halloween event called Fear Fest. And we are acquiring to see if we can get a single vet permit for, I'll call to have our 21-plus bar. And with this event, it's just basically going to be just a Halloween event, mostly targeted for young adults, you know, to have some fun during the Halloween season. And, you know, I believe that in Southern Utah, that nightlife and student life is important for anyone in college, especially since, you know, with college, it's kind of a pain. So, but, yeah, so.
You're, you're in law enforcement, Mike. Sheriff's not here, you feel good about-
Oh, yeah. No, they, they always, Three Peaks Oasis always does a good job. And it's, I mean, it's a good, it's a good event. Center, I mean, there's, I don't think there's really ever any concerns.
I would move for an approval of the local consent permit for a single event, Fear Fest Halloween Festival, held on October 31st at the Three Peaks Oasis.
Second.
Move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, thank you.
Do I just give this to you guys just to have it signed?
Yes, we can sign it. I think, right?
Yeah.
Who signs it? Do I sign it?
The Chair, the Chair. Yep. We'll have a copy that we keep, but we-
Somewhere.
Take that one with you. In fact, let's-
You're signing that, can I, can I make some comments, Brandon Hunter? I just wanted to say thank you to the Oasis for all that they do for our community. They do a lot of charity work, and they let a lot of religious groups go there. One was a YSA group, but at no cost. So to that group, thank you for all the, all that you do for the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think there was a group that went in there Saturday, some, some folks that had passed, and so they were doing kind of a memorial little thing for them. Well, that's really nice.
How do you want him to?
So I've just given you another copy. You can give that to him. And then, and I'll just get that one back from you there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry. Before we walk away, hi, my name is Rod. I'm, I'm the owner of Zion Live. I wanted to say thank you guys for being so willing and accepting of us doing events in the community. I don't know if you guys are aware, it's actually really hard for us to be able to do events in St. George. It's like a living footloose over there. So, thank you guys for your willingness and appreciation of us. We love doing stuff here.
No, thanks. Thanks for your quality events. We appreciate you guys.
Thanks. Let's see, we're down, what are we, down to 14?
Eleven.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, I, I've had, we were going to move that one up.
They had to sit and wait.
Scribbles on my paper. So we're 11. Presentation on the new mobile app and discussion of, on funding that is available for weeds in Iron County, presented by Aaron Eager.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. You're with UDAF?
Yeah, you just tell me.
You can just go. So Commissioners, appreciate you giving me a little bit of time in this meeting.
Thanks for your patience.
No problem. We're still, it's still morning, so I'll say good morning. Yeah, I am the State Weed Coordinator for Department of Agriculture and Food. I recently attended the Weed Board meeting for Iron County and with the Conservation District. And I presented what Department of Ag, some of our funding, and some of the requirements. And that's where this came from, where they asked if I would attend and present a little bit more to the commission. So I wanted to attend, you can go ahead and click it, and kind of show you statewide, we have about 300,000 data points across all counties for the 54 species that are regulated species in Utah. For Iron County, I wanted to show, we have these dashboards. Anyone can come and look at where we, these regulated species are for a county, for the state. We saw a good increase in 2020. Casey was the weed supervisor. I've heard that he has since left. And so I wanted to approach the county commission to encourage that we don't lose that data, that we don't, you know, that we continue to get that point data. And you'll see why when we get into the potential funding. But this gives us a lot of information going forward of what's been treated, what's been eradicated, and potentially how we can help people in your county, landowners, with agriculture, arranged land, help protect and improve, you know, their production. We also had in Iron County a really good starting point for the biocontrol. And if you're not familiar with biocontrol, there are a certain classification of insects that only eat one specific plant. It's a very easy way, if you don't have the resources to go out and spray or poll or do that, we put biocontrol and it slows down seed production, or it actually kills the, the plants. So we have a lot of activity starting in Iron County. I also wanted to show you that Iron County has been funded. KC did turn in a project in, I think it was 2020. We have dashboards where we can see exactly where those projects are, what has been treated. You can see all the yellow ones. This was for state funding, if you'll click to the next one. We also have, we run federal funding, so we have two federal grant programs that come through. One's Forest Health, and one is for the bipartisan infrastructure, the BIL funding. Iron County did participate also in, in those funds. Go ahead and click to the next one. So what I wanted to show you is, each year, we have a chunk of money that is dedicated to this program. And you can see in 2021, we had, click the next one, about 1.1 million dollars that went out to the counties and to Conservation Districts. Most counties participate. 2022, we had 2.3 million. This is when Iron County participated in this program and was awarded a grant. Go to 2023, we have 1.9. And then our current grant, we have 2.7 million to put out. And so I just want to encourage the county. We didn't have a grant turned in from Iron County in 2024 or 2023. I would love to see projects down here where your landowners are benefiting from this money. And it can go on any property, county property, state, federal, any of those properties. So go to the next, next slide. So there's a couple of things, and I'm going to be fairly quick with this. I'm going to encourage the commission to maintain your county weed board. I appreciate that you invited me to come speak. I would like to be able to be at least once a year, be, attend one of your county weed board meetings. It is one of the criteria for getting funds. Any of these funds is you have to have at least one weed board meeting a year. Go to the next one. I'd also like to encourage that, that you, I don't know if you've decided or picked someone for a weed supervisor. I would encourage with Casey leaving, that you fulfill that position, however the county wants to fill it, or assign someone to that, so that when those weed points come in, there is a point of contact at the county to respond to them. And then, you know, you have the support from UDAF. You have outstanding support in the corner with the Conservation District. I would hope that you would work with them. All funds don't have to come through the county. They can go through a district and still benefits the county, whether you want to run those contracts or let the district run those contracts. I would encourage that you have the weed supervisor or someone at the county interfacing directly as much as possible with the Conservation District. And the reason is, a lot of times, the county weed supervisor doesn't have that person, one-to-one relationship with private landowners like the district does. And so they tend to know what, you know, how to get out there and put that money right to the private landowner and help, you know, in agricultural production or in range land or, or whatever that project may be. One more. So EDMAPS is the main tool that we use. This is what I was talking about in that weed board meeting. We are doing a training today in Cedar City at 1 o'clock for anyone who wants to get involved. But as far as the funding goes, you can see the funding is there. You know, anywhere from 2 to 4 million a year. Would like to see, I was saddened that there was no projects in Iron County this year or last year. And I would encourage that use the district. But also, if you have a weed supervisor, the weed board can turn one in. I would like to see some of that money flowing into your county going forward. I think that's the last slide, maybe? Yeah, it is. So it's quick, sweet, but appreciate what you do. And I, I want to see this program go forward. I appreciate the district that they've stepped up and that you invited me to the weed board, so, and allowed me to speak here. So, any questions?
Thank you.
No. Mike, did you want to speak to the other?
Uh, no.
Okay.
No. How's that?
We, we haven't gone into a, a new hiring program yet because Casey just left a few weeks ago. And because of it going into winter time, we thought we would wait until budget hearings, which are coming up this next month. So, and then we'll decide kind of what were the monies that we have and what we're going to do. But there's probably-
So what about, so the grant, did Casey, was Casey on the, applied for these grants in the past?
Yeah. I think it was either the Casey, he applied for them, but it was probably through the weed board. Usually counties, when they put in an application, it's the county weed supervisor putting it in, but it's the county weed board. The fiscal agent is the county.
We did have a grant, uh, application come through, but it was late Friday afternoon after the Jeddah had gone out. And so I kind of, I kind of thought I'd visit with you individually about it. And if it's urgent, maybe you could sign it and we could get it ratified, or we could get it on the next agenda.
Who wants to talk about that? Was it-
Any of you know about that?
One of you want to speak about that?
UDAF that put in for that? I don't know what happened with last year, why Casey didn't put in for that. I, I don't, do you know the reasoning for that?
I don't know. All I know is I was the last man standing, so now I'm the chairman of the Iron County Weed Board.
Can you tell us your name?
Paul Nelson.
Yeah, Paul Nelson. You don't have to be present to be talked about. I know each one of you guys personally on that stuff. But, but from the, the weed board perspective, you know, you know, we kind of, people report back to us, and we report back on what's happening in the county on weeds. And Casey Adams was our weed supervisor. And I really didn't have a hands-on what he did for the grants and stuff like that. You know, maybe he just needed some, some help and stuff like on that. But I think we're up and running now. We got Amber Hatch that's willing to help us do whatever on, you know, grant money and the stuff that's out there. And, and Aaron tells us the money and stuff there. So, you know, from a weed board, and we've talked to Marilyn a little about that, we, we encourage you to, you know, maybe even before March, get things up and running, you know, for the weeds. You know, because really, there's some weeds that can be sprayed this time of year. You know, the rosettes and stuff on the Scott Sislin and stuff that, you know, so you don't have to go back and look for the wings next year. And we're, we're kind of missing that window of opportunity this fall. Some of the counties actually have a department. It's a weed department. And they don't tie it into the road department and stuff like that. And we've kicked around that idea, and we'd probably like to, you know, maybe just have a Iron County Weed Department and have a weed department chairman and, you know, that's full-time. Hire some part-time people in the, you know, summer and stuff to make that happen. You know, so, you know, I think there was some conflict of interest when Casey was working for the road department and stuff. He was supposed to be six months on, six months off. We tried to get him eight or months on, you know, doing the weeds, because-
It was difficult.
The weeds are, it's almost a full-time job. By the time he would handle the weeds eight or nine months out of the year, and then work on grants and stuff, you know, two or three months out of the year, it'd be a full-time job for a, to have a department. It would be a weed department and have a weed department chairman. And, and from a weed board, this is something I think that we would like to see happen in the county.
It's all about money.
Yeah, with the grant money, it's there. You know, we're trying to get that stuff.
I wonder why Casey didn't put in for-
I don't know why Casey didn't do that. It might have been just, he didn't know or didn't, you know, we didn't school him or encourage him or stuff like that. But I think now with-
I'm not sure either.
What we know now, I think we could probably close that gap and make that happen.
Are we too late to put in for 24, or?
I don't know.
You said, John, we have something?
There was, yeah, there was a grant that came in.
There, there is still some money left in '24. The next grant cycle is in December. So that's why we're doing EDMAPS training, get some points down. And we will do, willing to do the training on the other, the grant application. So, yeah, if, if there's someone defined as who's going to fill that out, or if you're going to want the Conservation District to do it.
Told us that they would help us.
You guys can help us with that?
Yeah.
With that grant?
Yeah. Let's not miss that opportunity in, in December, when the new grant comes out. I can look at the money that is still available, that's already a current contract. It goes till June 30th of next year. So there's still plenty to do. I don't know if we'd get it all, the contracting done before the first hard freeze. But it would allow you a spring treatment for sure, if we can put some, if you've got the-
It's, it's my understanding that some counties put in a lump sum budget in a weed fund. They subcontract that out, and when it's gone, it's gone. Now, in, obviously, that's probably less expensive for a county than having a full-time and some part-time people. And that's, and honestly, guys, budgets are getting real tight. So, you know, we, we're looking budget time of, of being pretty lean. And so-
Well, that's why we're, that's why we're depending on the grants. And the trouble with a grant is, we don't know if it's going to be every year for 10 years, you know, on that kind of stuff. So that kind of leaves you, you know, hanging out there and stuff.
That's true.
You know, but the idea was, you could take the money that was being spent for weeds now with the equipment and the manpower and stuff, and, you know, and just, you know, earmark that for, you know, a weed department. And then we get grant money and, you know, supplement the weed department, see if we could make that work. And, and the weed person is, you know, like Casey Adams, you know, with the experience that he had, you know, he knew where the weeds were. You just can't hire somebody every year and give them a backpack with a weed sprayer on and think that they're going to go kill the weeds. You know, you need to have somebody that's, you know, knows and is willing to do that.
Well, and some of it was plotted out, but others wasn't. I mean, he didn't, some of them weren't. And so that's, it's, a new person coming on is going to have to be trained.
And the expertise and stuff, like I said, I, you know, and I don't know if, you know, if Casey could be, you know, if, if we had a weed department and just had a chairman of a weed department, I don't know if Casey would be interested in being the, you know, be the go-to guy or not. But it'd be a really good, you know, asset for the county, I think.
So Wade's going to help us with that because he's helped Casey with the, with the mapping and that. Casey Adams, Wade Adams is going to help us also. He's, he's been willing, said he would be willing to help us with that.
You know, and it's not an eight-to-five job. You know, it might, it needs to be probably a salary-type job where the guy can just, you know, work. And, and I'm sure in the summertime, I mean, he was, you know, up and at him, you know, way before daylight and, you know, a lot of it-
Before the winds start blowing, because you can't-
Blowing stuff, so it's-
During the wind, yeah.
It'd take a special person to do that person, be that guy. So, anyway.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Let's have Luke.
Comment or question? Do you guys, do you know if the grant would pay for salary and like benefits, or is it just for like chemicals, supplies, equipment?
So different grants have different criteria. So like federal grant, if it's federal money, has a completely different criteria. So the state money, you can pay for labor. You can pay for seasonals. For some, there have been some counties where we have helped pay for the actual in-county employee, not the full employee full-time, but we've paid for some of that. But typically, it mostly goes as projects. So project money, but labor and equipment and all that's part of the project. So, yeah. But in each one, whether it's federal money or state money, then it's not earmarked to be going directly to fund a full-time county employee. But you can use it if that employee is doing part of the project spraying and out there restoration or whatever. Any labor that they do can be tied back and billed for. So that's how they kind of work it.
Yeah, I know, I know Casey did apply for a grant like two years ago. Then the last, last year and this year, no. But there was one like two years ago.
And I wanted to clarify, I did get that application, but it wasn't a UDAF, UDAF grant. It was a USDA grant, and it was for five counties. Different grant, yeah. And then- A different grant, yeah, and it is for weeds, but it's a different pot of money.
Any of you guys want to come up and let us, do any of you want to?
We're just here to help, we're here to help.
Okay. Hey. Yeah. You bet. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all for being here, appreciate it. Number fourteen, is that where we're at? Discussion on possible grant approval for Utah Office of Tourism.
Oh, Maria, she left and come back.
I left and I went up to Five Mile to see how it was coming along. It's coming along really well.
Isn't it beautiful?
Beautiful. So, just have to say Bryce is, Bryce has done a great job.
Jake, you don't want to stay for the sheep part?
What?
You want to stay for the sheep part?
I don't even know what it's about.
Oh, it's, it's just a resolution about the sheep industry, what's happening with it.
I want to go get there.
Uh, it's a couple more. Are you in a hurry? Yeah?
I've got that thing tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, you better go.
Yeah, you better go. See ya. Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, I'll be quick. So, uh, as you, every year I do put in for a grant with the Utah Office of Tourism. In years past, I've put in one for Brianhead. This year, Brianhad decided to, the town decided to put in the grant on their behalf, which has been good. And so, I put in to provide us with some funding to help us advertise in the off-season and I was awarded a hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars from the Utah Office of Tourism. It is a matching grant, so we have to match it and, but the total, the total campaign would be two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And so, I'm just, today I'm just seeking your approval for us to move forward with the hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred.
That matched about a TRT and TRCC?
It's matched by TRT, yes.
You have the funds to do that, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Is it my turn?
Thanks, all.
I move for approval of a grant for a Utah Office of Tourism, Utah Office of Tourism for twenty-twenty-three in the amount of a hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred.
Yes, to approve that amount from them.
From them.
Then we match.
With a matching, with a total of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Correct.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now, you've got number fifteen, discussion of possible approval to increase the camping fees for Iron County Campground at Three Peaks for two thousand twenty-four.
Did we do that last year too?
We discussed it, we did not...
Oh, we didn't do it?
We didn't do it because the, so the BLM had to go through their public process in order to increase the fees at their campground, their, which is Rocky Peak Campground. And so, a few months ago, they increased it to twelve dollars. Our camping fees are ten dollars per night and we like to kind, we, we've tried to keep our camp fees similar to the B, to the BLM. And so, my request is to increase the fee to twelve dollars starting January one of two thousand twenty-four.
What, how's it been?
Ten.
Ten dollars ago.
Phew, that doesn't seem like very much. Do we offer more in our camp area?
Um, yes, we offer water.
So, yeah.
So, and pavilions and covered, covered camping.
Cam.
So, if you would like to go up to fifteen?
I, I wouldn't feel bad about that. I think that's pretty inexpensive for a camp spot.
I, I do have something to say, having used them a few times. It's almost easier to come up with a ten and a five than it is in ten and two ones. And often I just, Iron County gets a tip because I'm like, okay.
There you go. That was our concern as well, but we didn't want to...
Do you just put it in a box? Is that what you do?
Yeah, we have a fee envelope. We're trying to figure out a way so people can just scan a code and pay online. And so, I need to work with the treasurer's office on instant pay, instant payments because we do have wifi, you know, well, you have phone reception out there, so it is possible to pay that way and that's actually what they would prefer. So, I mean...
Or you, I, I would say that fifteen dollars still is...
It's still...
And ours is nicer, I think. Just saying.
There's more amenities.
More amenities. And the, they're the coolest rocks too.
Yep, and the water.
I'm good with fifteen.
Okay.
What about you, Mike?
Oh yeah, I'm good. I have these discussions all the time of what it takes to, to keep our facilities open.
You didn't want to ask outside of what the BLM is charging, so, but...
So, fifteen puts us over the BLM?
It does put us over.
What are they at, what's BLM at?
They're at twelve.
At twelve. And what, do, what do they offer? Do they offer the same things?
No, uh, no.
Oh, it's not really.
Not quite the same.
Do they offer water?
They do not offer water.
Okay, so, three dollars, I mean, that's, to me, that's well worth three dollars to have water.
To have water.
And the restrooms, our restrooms are nice and...
Yeah, they, they did a, a nice improvement last year.
Oh, did they? Up at their...
But we, again, we do offer water, so...
Yeah, that's a big deal.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I would move for approval to increase the camping fees for Iron County Campground at the Three Peaks, twenty-twenty-four to fifteen dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sixteen, discussion of possible approval of a three-year financial advisory agreement between Iron County and Cruz and Associates.
So, this is for Marcus. And I don't know if Marcus would like to speak to that while he's coming up. There were several options discussed, maybe like a once-off per-project type setup or a three-year basically agreement. And, you know, we talked about the advertising element for the purchasing requirements that Iron County has, but one of the things to consider and, and maybe Sam would like to weigh in, but that Marcus and Cruz and Associates, they get, they don't actually get, they get paid out of the bond proceeds, not out of our regular budget. And so, we have agreements like this and some are even tacit, like with, like, you know, our municipal bond advisor sometime, and, and some of those that we, we use these folks, but we don't always enter into a formal agreement. So, there's a bit to consider there. Marcus, I'm sure could add to it.
It, it's honestly, whatever the, the county would like to do, we're happy to do it. It is a professional contract, so similar to like bond counsel or, or other services on there typically, or in our case specifically, we don't get paid unless there is a successful bond closing. So, there's no retainer, for instance, with the election help, there's no election fees that we're charging or anything like that. It's just in the case or the matter that, for instance, like the fire station, it was CIB approved, we did it, it closed, we were paid as part of the bond proceeds through the cost of issuance of the bond and, and that's that. So, it's really whatever the county would like to do, if you'd prefer deal only, so we work on a deal-by-deal basis or a three-year contract, we just have to have something in place to avoid any kind of issues with our regulatory agencies. So, that's, that's the, the reason for this today.
So, and I had forgotten the term, but the professional services is a bit of a carve-out in our, our purchasing policy. And I'd also like to point out and, and not remind the commissioners, because you know well, but the public and anyone interested, Marcus has been remarkable in helping us with multiple iterations, multiple challenges, multiple examples of fine numbers on creative financing ideas. I, I keep floating ideas at Marcus and he just swings and hits them out of the park. And so, I personally appreciate all that Marcus has done for us up to this point. Not that that should have a lot of bearing on it, but I think, for me at least, Marcus has gained a...
Well, the service has a lot to do with it and I, I know, just to mention, I mean, we called Marcus on a family vacation at Disney World and I think we called him four times. So, and he took our calls and took time out of his, with his family, so...
We need to deem right then.
Maybe a little noisy in the background, but I think we got through it, all right. Yeah, and just to introduce, by the way, so we did hire Trevor just recently as well. We'll be sticking around so we can introduce you more formally then, but, so we are growing here and we're excited to, to help the county through this project. We know it's been, it's been a, a sharp, lots of ups and downs, but I think we're, we're getting there, so.
Thank you.
Excellent. Well, we appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks.
I'll entertain a motion and...
I'd move for approval of a three-year financial advisory agreement between Iron County and Cruz and Associates Incorporated.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, thanks, gentlemen. Seventeen, resolution two thousand twenty-three dash fourteen, a resolution to support the sheep industry in rural America. American? America, right?
Did we, yes.
America, not, um, does any of you want to come up and address that? I think Scott was going to try to be here, but obviously he wasn't able to.
I don't know. I, I think the driving influence of why this is on the agenda today is because of that South Interchange that they were going to do and the meeting we had with the Department of Transportation and trying to limit some of the things that we're doing in the county with the livestock trails and those kinds of things. And you were there, Marilyn, and I think the consensus of opinion was from the livestock people and I got to hand it to Iron County, they actually have the livestock trails designated in Iron County and there's a lot of them. And the maps are there. Washington County, they don't have a single livestock trail designated in the whole county of Washington County, but we got a lot of them. And as you drive around, I don't know if they're in, where I go and some of the places in the county, you've got the signs up that say designated livestock trail, you know, and, you know, so they're there. You know, we bring our, I'm not sure I'm happy to do that, but we bring our sheep down Cedar City's Main Street every year. People are so excited to see a sheep. It drives me crazy. You know, there's a thousand head of sheep and they take a picture and I tell them, it costs them a pennyish, a penny a sheep for each picture, so I should be getting ten bucks every time they take a picture. But anyway, you know, the consensus of opinion was with that Department of Transportation meeting that they had here a couple of weeks ago that, you know, they were just nickel and diamond us to death to, you know, they wanted to put a little walking trail, it was only about eight feet wide up over the freeway and that's not going to work, not going to work. So, you know, the livestock people says, we're just going to bring the sheep down the old way and just come right underneath the freeway and come right down in front of Walmart and, you know, because even on the, you know, out there by the liquor store now, that, they've changed that into about a six-lane highway and people are coming over that hill and scary and stuff. So, anyway, I think, you know, Iron County does a good job on backing the ag industry and stuff and, you know, Randall had put some information together and Chad Reed had put some information together on, you know, you know, what the county monetarily gets out of the ag business and, and I think, you know, Becca's kind of getting up to speed on that, the new extension agent we have, but anyway, you know, I guess...
There's a resolution. I don't know whether we need to read the whole thing. It's just in support. The sheep industry has declined like sixty-two percent in the last little bit. I know Matt always tells everybody in the nineteen hundreds, there were four hundred and fifty thousand head of sheep in Modena back then, that they would bring them there to put them on the railroad, railroad to ship them out, but they would share them there also. And so, there really is a, a problem with imports and exports. The, the imports are, are, I mean, we don't even export, I don't think at all, but the imports are getting more and more and, and our legislatures need to, in Washington DC, need to recognize this and put tariffs on because, because our, our sheep people are a dying industry and we don't want that to go away.
Well, I know in New Zealand and Australia, they get government assistance on their sheep, so, you know, they can sell their sheep for less and import it to the United States and, you know, sell it in the grocery stores cheaper than we can raise it, you know, here and sell, you know, American lamb.
And with all of our regulations that have put onto us.
You know, and there used to be an import on, on wool and we used to get a wool incentive, but, you know, that's gone bye-bye and, you know. And I know when the United States first became a country, they, you know, they didn't have income taxes or anything like that. They, they survived on tariffs. That's the money they had to run the US government with all tariffs.
As a missionary in, in Sydney, Australia, forty-three years ago, we ate a lot of land chops. They were cheap.
Anyway.
Does Jake have anything?
I just learned about this. I got this text from Scott that's asking for support of the petition against tariff, imported lamb.
Imported lamb, because we, we aren't, we don't export our lambs. We can't afford to because they're grown other places cheaper like you, like Paul said, they're, they're subsidized in their countries, but they're not here. And, and the last year was pretty devastating to the sheep industry. It was about a third of what the price was they got the year before. So, we, we need to support our sheep guys because otherwise we're, they're going to be gone. We don't want that. They eat a lot of stuff that nobody else, not even the cattle, won't even eat, so we need our sheep people, for sure.
Thank you, appreciate you guys.
Um, I'll move to approve.
Thank you.
See ya. Uh, I'll move to, for approval of the resolution twenty-two-three dash fourteen, a resolution to support the sheep industry in rural America.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We should have made Paul stay.
Oh, yeah.
So, we've got...
We should have.
We've got, well, it's all right.
The board.
We've got the county boards, I've got one item on that. So, Brent Hunter has served faithfully on our Central Iron County Water Conservancy District for eighteen years. He's been the chair for, I don't know how many, but he's been an awesome ag representative on that board and we really appreciate, I served on that board for eight, I think, nine years. And, and he was just, he's just awesome.